Well, I'll go ahead and get this Urban Renewal Board meeting called to order. Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilor Peitzel?
Here.
Councilor Smallwood?
Here.
Councilor Hamblin?
Here.
Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor Exner?
Here.
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Chief Snyder?
Here.
Executive Director Jones?
Not here.
It's not here yet. And Mayor Polian?
Here. Thank you, and welcome, everybody. And I've convened, well, we've convened this Urban Renewal Board meeting to further our conversation on the Growing Together mural that our Arts Commission has put in front of us. If you've seen the staff report, there's been a couple of updates since we last convened our board. We, at the end of our last board meeting, we kind of provided directions to report back to us on some fundraising efforts that they had, were going to put forward. It looks like they have raised roughly a little bit over $6,000, as well as gotten some additional commitments for labor that add up to about an additional $3,000. I think the total we're looking at for the project was 20. That's off the top of my head, so if I'm wrong there, please somebody correct me. But, so looking for kind of a, I'm just gonna be blunt tonight, a little bit of a short conversation. I'm hoping for not too robust of a conversation. We have met on this a couple of times now and had some good dialogue, provided some feedback. They've now are going to report back with some efforts made towards the project. And I would, I'd like to see us make a decision kind of one way or the other on direction to go. I'll just start us off to make it easy. I'm a for it. I think they've presented a great concept. I think it's going to be a good addition to the community. And I think they've done some good efforts towards raising money like we asked them to do. It was a short timeframe in a really hard environment with COVID and 4th of July and everything else. And I'm really proud of their efforts. And that's just kind of my take on it. I'm open for discussion, or if we have a staff report, we certainly can hear it. But again, I'd like to see that staff report be a little on the shorter end. Thank you.
Jeff, you want to do a quick recap of the ask and where they're at? The mayor did a pretty good job there of summarizing.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add, but Commissioner Smith said, did you, did you have some words that you wanted to say about it?
Well, the details are available attached to the staff report. The details of what we're asking. The price had increased a little bit because of some unforeseen costs, but $6,700 has been raised, as well as $3,000 in labor. And so we are reducing what we're asking to $11,000.
Wonderful. Any council discussion, Councilor Exner?
I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schultz?
Yep, I'm supportive of it. I like it.
Awesome. Smallwood's got her hands up. I like it. Thumbs up from Hamblin. Thumbs up from Peitzel. Jan's waving, but I don't think she wants to talk, she's smiling. All right. Phil, you're looking at me judgmental. What do you think?
I just had a question. No, I'm all for it. The light fixtures, it says time three. It looked like there was five fixtures back there. Are you planning on replacing all those, or just, just taking three and replacing them?
The, the, the existing fixtures are all remaining, and they'll light the wall in general. But over in the loading dock area, there is going to be a sign that says Grow Together. And there'll be downlights on that, three downlights on that sign to light that into the building.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good.
Awesome. Well, staff, I think we, we'll go ahead and do a vote then. Do we have a motion to move forward in a second?
I move that we give the planning or Art Commission $11,000, and that's it?
Second, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, and I've been watching other cities' councillor meetings, and they haven't been going slowly with the roll call. And since everybody looks like they're doing good, I'm gonna call for all, all yays to say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Awesome. Now, if we only could move on and not wait till 6:30. But I wanted to set the tone.
Do I have a minute to say thank you?
Yeah, absolutely.
I do want to say thank you, everybody, for, for funding that. And we will be getting started on it ASAP, and it should be done by fall.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about the mural?
I don't think so.
I want to know when.
Let's not talk anymore, Pam, because they might reconsider.
Yeah, yeah, don't change your mind, Pam. First rule of sales is when they say yes.
Yeah, just jump off.
So while the, since we got a second or two, and the board is convened, we have talked a couple, three times about putting together an overall plan. Is there a time schedule for that? I don't want to get the details, but, because there are time schedules, we'll take a look at some of the bigger picture of the urban renewal dollars.
Yeah, we have that actually penciled in for the 20th of this month to talk about prioritizing projects and talking more about the big picture projects that could be in front of us for urban renewal.
Excellent.
And Becky and Pamela, one thing, as I was thinking about this, I just wanted to kind of say my piece on too is, is we're thinking of the overall budget and the city and what we're contributing to it, and all the work you've put in. I think we're ahead of the game in our, in our art commission with all the work that, that you've done and the labor and stuff that you've put in. And so just, you know, we're, after this expense, we're still at a huge net positive, I think. So I just, and of course, we are with the expense with getting some additional art, but really appreciate all the work.
Well, I would like to say that we are going to continue to raise funds for the art fund. And if we raise more funds for the art fund than this particular project costs, that will give us money for maintenance on our art. And hopefully some seed money for something in the future. And I think it's important to plan ahead for maintenance on the artwork instead of letting it decline to the level that it had this time. So that's definitely a, a part of what the Arts Commission needs to do is create a master plan that talks about a maintenance schedule and how we're going to achieve getting more art into our community in the future, locating it.
I know, we'd love to see that, so. All right, everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and convene the board meeting, and then we will reconvene our Sandy City Council for our work session at 6:30. Thank you. We'll y'all do from that to order. Jeff, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Councilor Peitzel?
Here.
Councilor Smallwood?
Here.
Councilor Hamblin?
Here.
Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor Exner?
Here.
Councilor Schultz?
Here.
Mayor Polian?
Here. Welcome, council, to our work session. So two items on our work session tonight is our social services project and proposal presentation. And then we'll have a presentation from Hoodview Disposal on a rate increase that's coming forward. But before we start that, I'll go ahead and do a review of our city council meeting this evening. And if there's any questions or concerns about items on the agenda, this is your opportunity to kind of pipe up and give council, not council, but staff an opportunity to get ready for tonight's meeting. So first, on the consent agenda, we got our city council minutes, our Sandy Arts Commissioner appointment, and our Oregon Public Works Emergency Response Cooperative Agreement. I know that myself and Carl participated on the, on the appointment process. Is there any questions on members of our, any questions on items on our consent agenda? Okay. Ordinances, that we are continuing a conversation on land use ordinance. Is there any questions on that before we go into this evening? And then we have a resolution on Vista Loop Tannic Pedestrian Project. Any questions on the resolution? Great. Then we'll have our city manager, and then council committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening until our executive session that we will be having after our meeting concludes tonight. With that, I will go ahead and begin to go to Jordan for our, to introduce our guests. I say begin because I'll just say that I'm really excited for our presentation tonight. This started off over, I don't know if it was coffee or lunch, but it was one of those two between Maggie and myself, who was really seeing, like I think all of us, a need for additional services for members of our community, different segments of our community. And, and she was excited to kind of roll up her sleeves and jump in. And we were lucky enough, right around that time, she was looking to go to graduate school and, and, and kind of continue on with some of her passions. And here we sit a year and a half later with some of the fruition of all the work that her colleagues have put in. So I'm, I'm, I know I'm really excited, and I wanted to thank Councilor Lee for the leadership that you've shown with your work with Maggie and your participation with their project. And of course, to you as well, Jordan, thank you for all the work on the staff level and everything, and, and, and the role that you played in this. And with that, Jordan, let me go ahead and introduce our topic for this evening.
Yeah, I have the pleasure to introduce Maggie Holm and Callie Levy, who were two of the students on this project team that Councilor Lee and I had the pleasure to really just assist on, on a, you know, city level of, you know, helping guide them and navigate sort of the terminology and definition of master plans and the pathway to doing a successful project at the local government level. But really, these, these students did a fantastic job on this project and did a lot of work in both research and, you know, developing a very thorough plan. And Councilor Lee and I had the opportunity to see their presentation to their fellow classmates. I think it's a project management course as part of the graduate school there at PSU. And really impressive amount of work. We did have to attach it to the Agenda Packet in order to have it available for the council. So if you get a chance, please go to tonight's Agenda Packet, and you can click on those links to get a copy of the presentation plus the report from the project team. So, yeah, again, I have the pleasure to introduce Maggie and Callie, who'll be giving this presentation tonight. And as part of the presentation is, you know, a chance for dialogue and questions at the end. And staff is happy to assist with any questions too. But with that, I really just want to hand it off to Maggie for, for their presentation. Let her share her screen.
Thank you, Jordan, for that great introduction. All right. So, yeah, as Jordan said, I'm Maggie Gilman-Holm, and I'm here today with my colleague, Callie Levy. And we are just really excited and appreciative for the time to speak with you tonight about the project we've been working on over the past term. And as Mayor Polian mentioned, something that I've been kind of ruminating on for a while with him and Councilor Jan Lee and City Manager Jordan Wheeler. So we, alongside two other PSU students, worked on a project creating this proposal and a comprehensive report on best practices and recommendations for the creation of a task force to develop a social services strategic plan. Today, more than ever, we need to find innovative and productive ways to tackle the complex issues residents are facing. We started our research looking at the root causes of some of our most complicated social challenges, such as homelessness, addiction, mental health challenges, and domestic violence. Social determinants of health are important factors that create overall health and wellbeing in individuals. What we know is that equitable access to these social determinants in communities takes purposeful strategic planning and collaboration. We also know that trauma drastically impacts these different determinants in numerous ways. The National Council for Behavioral Health defines trauma as something that occurs when a person is overwhelmed by events or circumstances and responds with intense fear, horror, and helplessness. This extreme stress overwhelms the person's capacity to cope. And after decades and decades of research on the effects of trauma, it is clear that trauma is linked to the many behavioral, social, physical, and psychological challenges we face in our community. Specifically, adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, play a significant role in the potential outcomes of individuals and families' lives. The ACE Study identified 10 specific ACEs, looking at adults' experiences of abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction during their childhood. The staggering results showed that ACEs were common, and that the more ACEs a person had, the more at risk they were for serious behavioral, physical, and mental health issues. This has proven true across genders, races, and income levels. As the organization ACEs Too High explains, someone with an ACE score of four is twice as likely to be a smoker, seven times more likely to be an alcoholic, and has an increased risk of attempted suicide by an alarming 1,200%. This public crisis hits close to home. ACEs have been studied in Oregon for several years now, including Clackamas County, where they found that almost 20% of residents have experienced four or more ACEs. When looking at one particular ACE, child abuse, recent data for Clackamas County shows that 791 children were confirmed victims of abuse in 2019 alone. Not dealing with issues of trauma is extremely costly to the public. Using data from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, we estimate that the total lifetime financial cost associated with just last year's confirmed cases of child abuse in Clackamas County will be more than $166 million. If nearly 69% of these overall costs are associated with productivity loss, this has especially direct impacts on local governments and communities. The $114 million of lost productivity means a loss of revenues from taxes, as well as the loss of essential work by teachers, medical professionals, construction workers, and so many more, along with the loss of potential vital economic development, such as small business creation. Downstream interventions, such as child protective services, are definitely necessary, but also extremely costly and not always effective when used on their own. Social services are often siloed, many times lacking the funding that they need. And while often working towards similar goals, they do so in diverging pathways. In partnership with preventative measures, however, collaborative and coordinated services are not only more effective, they are also less costly to the community in the long run. With all of this overwhelming information, what are we to do as a small rural community? The Department of Health and Human Services maintains that building resilient and trauma-informed communities is essential to improving public health and wellbeing. As Ms. Levy will explain, the way we are recommending Sandy address these issues is through the creation of a task force to develop a strategic plan using the best practices of trauma-informed approaches and integrated social services. So as Maggie just explained, the purpose of this proposal tonight is to promote a strategic, a task force to develop a strategic plan, which ultimately will result in greater cooperation and coordination of services, increased accessibility to those services, and more efficient and effective use of public funds. Ultimately, the goal is to increase accessibility, equity, and inclusion within the social services in Sandy. The structure of the task force would be the ultimately answering to the citizens of Sandy, with the city council acting as the chief executive. A task force chair would serve as a project manager, with the task force itself being made up of stakeholders in the outcome of the strategic plan. So those would be both members who work in social services, as well as community members. And we have on the screen some examples of the sectors we think would be most beneficial to serve on the task force. This slide just gives a visual of the level of stakeholders that would be impacted by a strategic plan. The ones in bold are potential suggestions for the actual task force. And many others could contribute both input and ideas in the development of the plan in a less formal way, as well as just be impacted by the outcomes of the plan. So as was mentioned, we spent the last quarter working on a comprehensive report about this proposal. And in it, it goes into the background of ACEs and trauma, and why that's such an important way to address these issues, as Maggie just gave you an overview of. It also lays out best practices for both developing a task force and a strategic plan, our specific recommendations for how Sandy do this, an example of an outline that could be used to develop the plan. And throughout the entire report, are many beneficial resources and guides that would, the task force would be able to utilize in the plan development. As part of our report, we analyzed 22 strategic plans, and a few stood out as examples or potential models. One was the City of Independence, which we wanted to highlight, as they have a similar population and budget to Sandy's. We know that this can be done in a similar city. We provided strategies and then actions to address those strategies. And as you can see here, this one was to provide better access to social services. And one action to do that would be to create a one-stop shop for social services. Next, thank you. Another plan that we really liked was the RISACOAS Strategic Plan. They have objective, potential outcomes, as well as specific success measures. And we felt that part was especially important, as not all plans included this, but it does provide a way to measure the progress that you're making, which then would help the plan be more sustainable in the future, because you would be able to make adjustments going forward and see what was most effective. We also did a survey of both the Sandy City Council, as many of you participated in, so thank you, as well as Sandy Connect. And we got great responses. Ultimately, we got 16 in total, and there was support of this project. And we asked about service areas that needed to be addressed, ideas for improvement, and what role the government could play. So the areas that most people mentioned needing work or having issues in were transportation, homelessness and housing, youth activities, mental health, and senior services. Some barriers that were brought up were the lack of residents' knowledge of the services in Sandy, and their failure to successfully navigate those services, as well as the location, transportation, and service hours. Service coordination was brought up as both something that would be an appropriate role for the government to play, and as an area that could be approved upon. Schools and communities that have strategically implemented trauma-informed practices and integrated social services have seen many benefits, including one healthcare and social service integrated program in Oregon for pregnant women, which saw an 8% reduction in the foster care placement rate and a 7% reduction in confirmed child abuse cases during the children's first year of life. At an alternative high school in Walla Walla, Washington, the graduation rate increased by 29%, and suspensions decreased by 84%, only a year after implementing a trauma-informed framework. During a five-year trauma-informed program in the DOWLS, the school district saw a 13% decrease in student use of alcohol. And in Polk County's Integrated Services Collaborative last year, they were able to collectively leverage and gain a new funding partnership with the United Way. To accomplish these kinds of transformational changes, we need strong local leadership and support to take on these challenges. Not only is a strategic plan for social services a fiscally and morally responsible initiative, it is also directly related to four of city councils' goals. Examples of related objectives that could be included within the Sandy Strategic Plan are identifying gaps of childcare access within the community, using the collaborative to leverage funding for affordable housing development within Sandy, workforce development programs, including more opportunities for youth to connect with professionals in diverse settings. And importantly for the future, opportunities with the Sandy Community Campus to make plans, leverage funding, and create activities for the community and youth, as well as utilize space to provide social services directly to the community where it is needed. So what would it look like if we had a community that gave children the chance to grow up in a place that has trauma-informed schools, service providers, and even city councilors? What would happen if residents could locally connect to services that supported their work towards stability through access to childcare, mental health care, and workforce development programs? Through purposeful strategic social service planning, our community can genuinely be one of the best places to raise a family, find meaningful employment, and to retire. The city can harness their capacity for innovation and leadership to empower existing agencies to work together in a more meaningful and effective way. Using a task force to build a social services strategic plan will allow Sandy to capture the benefits seen in other areas and will foster the creation of a truly resilient, strong community for all. Thank you all again so much for your time and attention. I know that's a lot of information to process very quickly. So we are happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you so much, Maggie. If you wouldn't mind taking that part off the screen, that way I can see as people are moving around and wanting to interact. Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'll just, I'll start again with, thank you for the presentation. Unfortunately, I did not have an opportunity to read through the full report I sent out earlier today. Definitely will be some reading material, as I know you've put a lot of work and effort. And, I mean, the results really speak for themselves. Really appreciate the information you provided tonight. Any questions or commentary from council? Councilor Lee?
Yes, attending a couple of the Connect meetings, there are so many different people there that are supporting the kind of programs that you showed we really need to have with a coordinated overview in our community. I wonder if you'd had a chance yet to show this to them, or were planning on that? Because that's probably where we would get committee members if we go forward.
Yes, so we have touched base with folks briefly when we explained things about the questionnaire, and people participated. And then actually later this week, Sandy Connect is meeting, and so I'm on the docket to talk about how tonight goes and any updates just about the project in, in general for everyone. And I definitely believe that there are several folks within that group who would be willing or happy to participate in the task force.
Yeah, I was just, Councilor, I was just on an email that they sent out this afternoon, I believe, with the presentation on there and telling them to watch this presentation. So, yeah, very excited to have those folks engaged. Further questions? Councilor Exner?
More of a comment than a question. I'm really impressed by the improvement in some of the different other cities that have taken some of this on it. For a long time, I've looked at the homelessness, over the years, how we've evolved and changing how we deal with homeless, how we deal with some of the seniors in our area. And as I approach that, I'm not quite there yet. So one of these days, when I do get to be a senior, I'll be able to know exactly how they feel. But there is really a need for us in our city. It seems like we've always had this barrier about we want to do things, but we just can't seem to find the money or the time. And I think this is one of those things that might put us over the top. I also have not had a chance to read the entire package. Look forward to doing that the next few days. But I certainly would throw my support into finding ways to make this thing happen in Sandy, particularly in the senior and homeless country. Again, this is really, really looks like an important way to move forward on some of those things that we've always said we want to do, but never seemed to find the right way of launching forward into it. So, good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilor Schultz?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for that great presentation. It was especially, I guess, stuck out to me, the childcare piece that you were talking about, as you stated, is a council goal and one that I've been working on quite a bit. And just this idea that the more we invest when they're little, the less we have to deal with when they get older. And so I think that's a really important piece of the discussion here and one that I think needs to be more broadly talked about, known about. Because I don't think very many people realize that if we invest in them when they're three and four years old, then all these things you're talking about later in life, it's so much better than if, you know, they had just been neglected or ignored or whatever else. So I really appreciate that, and I'm very supportive of this project, and I hope we can. And I hope we can get lots of super interested people on this task force and get it going.
Awesome.
Hey, I just want to give you guys kudos for being very proactive in addressing the elephant in the room, which is a mental health, you know, crisis that we have in this country. And I can't think of any better way to attack that on the long term than to deal with it when they're young, so that they have coping mechanisms and skill sets to, you know, to become productive adults, which is, which is where we're lacking right now. So great job, great presentation. Congratulations. And yeah, definitely in support of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, great. Well, thank you so much. And Counselor Lee?
Yes, I just had a question for Jordan. If the council wanted to move forward with this project, what kind of steps would be required?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking is, you know, the council probably in mind of, you know, what's the next step from here and how do we make this project a reality? And I would recommend, I'll continue to work with Maggie and the project team on the details of forming that task force and soliciting members for that, kind of putting together a charge. If, once you get into the report, they've actually started a whole outline of the plan and sort of the process and how that can happen. But, you know, I think the approach on this is actually pretty brilliant in the sense that cities, you know, really don't have a lot of expertise in this area. We have data, you know, we obviously have services that interact with, you know, individuals with trauma or the ills of, you know, caused by trauma. But in terms of expertise in our staff and, you know, our specific services, there's not a lot of that. But to create a task force from, you know, already pre-existing community leaders and other organizations that have that expertise to form this group and then draft this plan is a really smart approach. And it also, you know, is smart in the sense that it won't create a lot of demand on, you know, staff time and resources because we'll be leveraging the expertise already in the community and in the county. So I think in terms of, we have direction, this is, you know, work session, the council is receptive to the project, excited about it. And then we can come back with a more formal, here's the next action for creating this task force and then go to work on recruiting and establishing members with the appropriate stakeholders. How does that sound, Maggie and Kelly?
Wonderful. Thank you.
And it's great on our end as well. So thank you and thank you so much. And we look forward to continued dialogue and action on this and appreciate your interest and involvement in improving our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
One last thing, if we have questions, when we do finally get into, weighed into this pretty substantial document, can we connect with you folks about how we might ask those questions? We don't have all the answers for the questions for tonight. You have some emails. Are they embedded in the document?
They are not embedded in the document, but Jordan, would you be willing just to kind of pass along that information? And then that way, yes, please feel free to reach out to us and we're happy to answer any questions that may come up.
Great, great. Thank you. Have a nice evening. So with that, we will move forward on our agenda for the work session this evening to our Hoodview disposal and recycling rate increase request. I see a couple of new faces, Andy and Steve. Welcome. Jordan, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, I'll introduce Andy Kehoe, the president of the company, also Steve Donovan, who is working with them on this rate review and request. Hoodview Disposal holds an exclusive franchise with the city of Sandy. They provide our hauling of and collection of solid waste and recycling and also the yard debris within our city boundaries. I think it's Article 7 in the franchise agreement, lays out the rules for a special rate review. And I think it was, they could correct me if I'm wrong, it was a couple of years ago, maybe less, maybe in that 18 to 20, 24 months range where they did meet with the city council about kind of where the market was going in terms of the recycling commodities and the issues that that was causing for, you know, the solid waste and recycling industry. So I know several of you were not on council at that time. So we felt that it was good to have a work session before, you know, any kind of formal rate request resolution was proposed. But per that franchise agreement, the collection rates are set by the city council by resolution. And so tonight, the franchisee is presenting some information in the council packet. There is a cover letter. I think we included the proposed rates, so the existing rates and what the proposed rates would be per this review and then a copy of the presentation too. So I know they're, they'd welcome any questions and discussion as part of the work session tonight. So I think I'll turn it over to, as Steve Donovan, I think is going to be doing the presentation. And I believe you have the ability to share your screen as well for your presentation slides. Make sure to unmute yourself too.
Yeah, it looks like you're talking, but we can't hear you, Steve.
There we go. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. We've got a five-slide PowerPoint presentation. Hi Carl, hi Jeremy, hi John. You guys were at the 18, 2018 when we had the last love-in on this. So let me hit this PowerPoint and we can get going on it. Okay, here we go. So why are we here tonight? We're going to ask you some stuff and we're going to tell you specifically what we want from you. We're going to talk about the recycling markets and what is really driving our ask and our heavy lift tonight. We also want to talk about the annual cleanup program that you has, since COVID-19, we have not had. And we've got some options for you to consider and Andy wants to talk about that. And then we're going to go into the nuts and bolts of exactly what we want from you in terms of the rates. And then we've got a chart at the back end. I think it's in your packets that shows where your residential rates are relative to everybody else. So in September of 19, we informed the council in writing about our intent to request special rate review. We knew we were going to be in trouble. We, in 2018, we had done a temporary bridge increase and since that time, things have only gotten worse. So for fiscal 2019, Hoodview lost 8.47%. That's $172,000 on $2 million and change of revenue. What we're requesting is a general rate increase that we're willing to phase in over a six, or over a six-month period, starting in September, and then the second phase hitting in in March of 2021. Carl and Jeremy and John, this was October 18th of 2018 when we were back with you and we talked about it costs $130 a ton to dispose of recyclables. When the recycling program and the Opportunity Recycle Act was created, it was envisioned that recycling would generate revenues and we would make money off recyclable materials. That has not happened and since China and Vietnam and Asia has stopped taking our recyclables, there's no place to go with it. I'm pretty sure most of you folks are informed about this situation. So it should not be any news to you. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm going to continue. Since that time, the recycling markets have only degraded more. Right now, we're costing us $138 a ton and we fully expect to see that hit $150 a ton within a year's time. And to put it in perspective, and this is the, Carl, I think you brought this up back in, when we talked last time, was what does it cost you just to dispose of garbage? It costs us 97 bucks a ton just to get rid of garbage. So we're sending out trucks to separately collect the recyclables. It's costing us quite a bit more to dispose of. So you can see where this spiral is heading. And the other thing is, we provide the recycling principally to our residential customers. Sandy is 60% residential. So the largest portion of the customer base is the most expensive portion to serve. And, go ahead.
I apologize to interrupt, but where's the stuff going? If transit's not taking it, what are we doing with it?
Well, right now, it's starting to build mountains of it and it's stockpiling because we don't have the domestic capacity and infrastructure to absorb it. We can absorb some of the papers, but the rest of the stuff is really not going on. In fact, some cities have simply stopped their collection programs. New York, Houston and Long Beach, California, they've simply stopped doing it and they're, they're used, they're landfilling it. That's where it's going. And Steve, so what are you hoping for, Steve? I mean, you're hoping that the world changes and then somebody starts taking your recycled goods? That's the plan. Okay.
We're actually.
Go ahead, Andy.
We're actually fortunate in Oregon that we have, still have access to some local bills. For example, all of our paper from Sandy International Paper Mill in Longview, Washington. So Oregon and Washington and places in California, we're still able to ship domestically. What Steve's referring to is some of the rural in Southern Oregon have changed the program and Eastern Oregon have changed. Idaho has eliminated some programs. So we're still kind of lucky here in Oregon that we have places to go. And our association of haulers in Oregon have made the decision to not ship any overseas at all because of the reports we've gotten back on what they're doing with that material. Some of it is allegedly ending up in the ocean. So we have agreed as a consortium, we are not going to ship, even if those markets become available, which they have, we're declining right now until we get a handle on exactly where this material goes.
And Steve, can you talk about also that the requirement that's put on by the state to have a recycling program? Because I think we can see all this and go, well, just throw in the landfill. But no, there's actually requirements from the state of Oregon in.
Jeremy, you're my straight man. Thank you. Yeah, the Opportunity to Recycle Act defines for a city over 10,000 like Sandy, you must give the opportunity to recycle and you have to recycle herb side recyclables, yard debris, used motor oils and another of the mix of the program, an education component. Jeremy, we talked about that last time. And under the state law, which has not changed and the DEQ has not changed their administrative rules, we continue to collect the materials under the Opportunity to Recycle Act, which is the statute. So Jeremy, you're right. It's not, we'll just stop doing it and save some money. We can't do that.
That's, that is, that is the law.
And DEQ has convened a worker statewide that's working on these issues right now. And one of the proposals that the DEQ is pushing is what they call EPR is Extended Producer Responsibility, which is evaluated on what requirements, you know, where that might go. You know, basically other deposit bill type of ideas. But for now, it's just process and recover these materials.
Hey, Steve or Andy, is there a chance that we can do some kind of modification of our recycling materials? There's a, it sounds like paper has at least some sort of potential for recycling, but some of the other stuff that costs, it looks like 50 bucks a ton and you're losing money now if you're doing it. If we could find a way to put that into, I don't know, a landfill, at least portions of it, or if there is something else we can do, is there a way to get around this state law that we are, we've been, I would say stuck with, but certainly fall within?
That's exactly what our association is asking the DEQ to take a hard look at some of the materials. And unfortunately, Sandy being in Clackamas County, we are actually treated as the metro waste shed. Right. You're talking about until the DEQ decides they want to change their material and their, their. We are stuck with the same program we have right now. But those are the, exactly what you said are the exact arguments we're making on a statewide level with the DEQ. And it's a two-way discussion at this point. There's not, those, we're not big adversaries. We're trying to work together to find.
There's got to be a solution someplace. If you've got trash, it just cannot be recycled. And just making big mountains in some landfill someplace. And so we can find a place, hopefully, maybe sometime in the future. That sounds like kind of a waste of money, at least.
This is really a broken record, isn't it, Carl? Because this, this is the same voice. I mean, Jeremy, Carl, we, we talked about this in 2018. Carl, you said, can't we stop doing this? You know, when, when you're hitting yourself in the head with a hammer, the best thing to do is to stop. And the answer is no, we got to keep hitting ourselves in the head as of right now. So let's talk about the options now for the cleanup program. And I'll hit the bullets here. Andy, why don't you take it away?
Obviously, with the governor's restrictions on social distancing, with the current program, the way we handle it is we have three to four people per truck, per vehicle marching on the streets. Whether we can socially distance, most of the large companies in the country are not even collecting any bulky waste during this COVID pandemic. We are collecting bulky waste. We continue to collect it responsibly. Of course, I want to keep all of our workers safe. And in other communities, what we've done is we've replaced the annual program, the one-week cleanup program with a, what we call a personalized cleanup day, where a customer can call us anytime within the calendar year and get their items picked up for free, built, obviously built into the rates. And that seems to work well. It also kind of has the side effect of getting the scavengers out of the communities during that week. I don't know if we've had a big problem in Sandy, but we've had those problems in other communities where that kind of word gets out that we're having the cleanup program and people come from everywhere, kind of roaming the streets. And honestly, we've had customers in other communities like request that we in the program because things were getting stolen. And I don't think that's been a problem in Sandy, but it's only, we've only had the program in Sandy for, you know, maybe 10 years. We feel like the personalized cleanup day is, is a better all overall program and it's something that we could provide the city immediately.
What do you guys think?
What's it cost? Well, you mentioned it's worked into the rate, so Mike, and we're going through a rating craze. So I mean, what are we, what are our rate payers paying for that?
It's roughly, I don't have that number on the top of my head, but as I recall, maybe Steve has it. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000.
Yeah, I think it comes down to less than $3 or $4 per household per year, is I think is what it came down to. We can, we can provide you with that, that data.
Well, if you, if you think you're close, you don't need to.
I think it will actually provide a savings in the future. It'll be, the cost would probably be a little bit less because we don't have to bring in this outside help. We bring temporary services in for that week and eliminate that cost. So I think it'll.
Yeah, I think this is one of the number one things I've heard during the COVID time that citizens around the area want and asking, when is that happening? Because they never know which day, they can't remember. They just know it's in the spring and they just see some people doing it and go, oh yeah, it's this week. It's one of the number one things. It's what I hear all the time that what makes Sandy great. We have this cleanup day and we have it in one week. And I understand the COVID thing for, you know, not being able to do it this year on that. But going forward, I would really like to see it back to the way it was in that one week period. So that, you know, it kind of builds on itself versus just one person sticking a lot of trash out, a mountain of, you know, stuff on that one time. But yeah, out of the many things that we have in Sandy, that's one of the most popular positive things I hear a lot. But then this year specifically, because I think a lot of people were at home and were cleaning, doing their spring cleaning with a lot of time on their hands. And I mean, there's a lot of pretty yards out there. But, but the point is, is I know my wife's asking, well, we clean the attics. Where we put all the stuff that we just cleaned out, you know, and waiting and storing it up for when it's going to come back. And so all I can do is hope that it will come back. If not, sometime in the near future, but at least next year.
We would prefer to switch to the personalized cleanup day permanently because of all the problems that have arisen in the past with the one week. It's very difficult on our staff to, ours, under the Department of Transportation maximums during that week and the expense of the outside labor. Forward, if we could, if we could do the personalized cleanup day as something we could offer immediately and keep track of. And people actually kind of prefer it because they don't have to hold that material for that one week. They can do it whenever they want to in the calendar year.
I kind of like that personalized idea better also. It lets you plan better and if it's cheaper, so much the better.
Yeah, I, as a country, I don't want to get too. Yeah, I, as a contrary, I don't want to get too adversarial with Jeremy, but I live right on a fairly popular road. And when we did this for a week, it just seemed like I would have people going through my trash that I stacked out onto the a street and they would scatter it all over the place. And then they would kind of like stretch it out, kind of looking for pieces that they liked. And it would connect with the guy next door to me and then next door to him. And pretty soon you got this long slimy trail of stuff. It wasn't quite that bad, but it was certainly uncomfortable to see, look out there. And and I would start stacking stuff out after a few days and pretty soon I get a whole big pile. And then every time I go out in the morning, I'd see somebody had trashed through my stuff and scattered it out. And I'm sure it made it tougher on the the guys that pick it up. So I do also like the idea of doing the personal cleanup and stuff, especially we're talking about just adding a few dollars per year to the list. I got to say Sandy's going through some sticker shock with some of the raised rates that we've done in the last well, six months or so. And it's going to be a little bit of a notice to see that we're increasing our our cleanup bills as well as having some of these others in place. But really, I know people love to see their garbage gone. I do.
Okay, well, we'll let this, for lack of a better term, compost in your minds and we'll get back to you. But we would like to get a closure on this issue possibly before September. So we'll put a placeholder on this. Our preference is the personalized cleanup. And we'll let you guys walk it through your 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 system. Now, the big lift. We have delivered our independently reviewed audits and our rate model to city staff. They've got copies of them. Based on the review, yep, here we go. We're requesting a 25.15% general rate increase to overcome our losses. That translates to $6.44 per single family customer per month, which the 35 gallon cart is the the most popular. We recognize that is simply untenable. Yeah, we're losing money, but we can't put that kind of hurt on anybody in. So what we would propose to do is phase it in September 1st, $3.22 for that customer, and then the balance coming in in March. And we're sick about it. We don't want to come to you with this. We wish we we didn't have this problem. But this is a family business. We've got three generations of family working in the business. And we can't sustain losses like a waste management or a republic services and just carry it. So this is the graph of neighboring communities' rates. And one of the things that we want to point out with your franchise that is so unique is it's a backward looking franchise. In other words, in order for us to do a formal rate review, we have to have the prior year's financial results to share with you. A lot of communities in the metro area now are going prescriptive. They're trying to get in front of this so that they can do small increases every year going forward, rather than us coming to you with a 25% hit because of your backwards.
Steve, I was going to ask you about this. What do we need to do? And I don't know how council feels on this. We'll need to talk about it. But what do we need to do to change that? Just request it?
We could, yeah, you could definitely change the language in the franchise. The franchise is this this big document. We've made changes to it before. And there's, there's no reason we couldn't make changes to it. We've done it in other communities and it's it's a living document. It grows. And you bet, Mayor, you could change it. It's a deal. It's a contract. You can always amend the contract.
So I got a couple of questions for you, Steve, real quick here. One is, you said this, if this personal pickup thing costs a few dollars a year, is that included in this particular 25% increase?
Yep.
Okay, so there wouldn't be anything on top of that.
Right.
It was already in the rate before.
Right.
Okay, all right. So it's just a matter of in putting it into the increase. Okay, so there's that.
Just. Carl, we were just going to charge you. Everybody else was going to be free.
You bet. I got lots of money. No sweat. I'll pay for whatever everybody else needs to.
Mayor supports that.
Yeah, sure. The other question is, or a statement is, is that we have said many times over the years that it's always much easier to have a lot of very miniscule increases in our rates than it is to come in every several years and put a big one on.
Right.
I tell you, Mayor, I would be interested in seeing us move towards a small incremental changes over many or every year rather than this larger one.
Well, when the franchise was back in 2004, when the franchise was originally crafted, we had a method where every other year we had program type rate increases, which are based on a portion of the Consumer Price Index, raises in in disposal and some other components. And we've been using that for years and years before this recycling thing just fell on its face. The whole concept of of Oregon's program and frankly, the nation's was that somehow recycling was going to pay for itself. And now we desperately know that that's not true. And that's why we're facing this big hit, Carl.
So most of the haulers on this list were hit with that shock loss almost two years ago. And those communities saw this four to $7 rate increase at the time. And so while that's going to kick us, our rate increase will kick us up to the upper quadrant in March, I'm fairly confident that you're going to see some of these others trickle past us about the same time. Because we'd probably be back in to see you again until 2022.
So we, our our request after March 1st would bring us up to 32 bucks, $32.03. And then we wouldn't, under the current franchise, we wouldn't be back to visit with you until 2022, when all of these other guys would be climbing up the curve again. So we're always, we'll always be doing, Carl, you're right, we'd be doing this this big, big hit when you'd rather be doing predictable, forward looking increases that are more digestible. And yeah, we're with you. We get it. And you guys faced that with sewer and I know you you struggled like crazy on that.
I would be shocked to see anything of what we've, of this magnitude in the in the next number of years. I shouldn't say that because I say that it'll happen. But this is pretty, this recycling market's pretty significant. It's the biggest significant of my 30-year career in this industry.
I I just worry that our relationship's not getting any better with China, you know, that's my big worry.
Well, Mayor, what we've been doing for the last 20 years is we've been exporting our pollution to them. And then they send us televisions and and DVD players back. And it was a great relationship until they finally figured out that they're going to die. These people are dying in China from our pollution.
Right. Yeah, that's right.
So Steve, this 2559 right now is for one month. But you guys bill residential on every other month, right? Two months at a time. So when the bill comes, it comes with two months. Is it possible to switch to every month? So it doesn't, that hit isn't built up on some of our residents. And you see, I mean, basically, you're paying for it for that month and not having to do it every other month. Where it's just a bigger dollar amount for them coming out of that paycheck as they're trying to manage their paychecks.
So that's a common question in our industry. Our industry standard has been every other month. And I've always wondered why. I've asked the same question many, many times. And it comes down to the cost of a stamp.
Yep.
It is going to be both directions. So obviously, we have online bill pay. We have, you know, probably almost 20% of all that you attach a postage stamp to it. You kind of have to weigh that cost going both directions. What is the stamp now, 70 cents? Or I don't even remember what it is right now, but.
Can we encourage, you have a program to encourage doing it online or automatic bill pay?
We can.
You can't even get a, can't get a health club membership for the last 30 years without them automatically having it be automatically withdrawn. So I know I have that set up. It's nice. I don't have to worry about it. But is there an education piece you guys can program in to get people to do automatic billing instead of having to put a postage stamp on it?
Add a flyer to those very easily and encourage that.
And then maybe switch to a every month model, like we do with water and sewer and every other bill?
I believe if if a customer requests it now, it can be set up that way. I need to double check with my customers. See that that's possible now, today.
Okay.
Everybody, we're sorry. We're back in front of you with this lousy, lousy situation. But we're in trouble and we need, we need your help.
All right. Is this the last slide, Steve?
Yeah, I'll get out of here.
Oh, sorry. All right, well, we've had some questions. Any additional council questions or comment? Obviously, it's never easy to see an increase like this, but obviously, it's been explained. And we can't really control the world environment. We also have a state requirement that lingers over it that we have to meet and that they have to meet as well. So we're kind of in one of those situations we're always in where we're, you know, we we're proceeding, we're proceeding without loving it. It was for any feedback on changing over looking ahead rather than looking back. We had a couple of comments from myself and Councilor Exner wanting to do that. Now, was there anyone that kind of disagreed with that or had any opinions? Councilor Lee? Okay, and then I'll go to Pete.
I don't disagree with it. I think it's a good idea to change the agreement to allow for that. And I support the extension of the pricing because we have to do that under today's conditions.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Pitzel.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. You've been a great partner of the city and going back a long time. And I do recall the previous company that we did have a franchise with. And, you know, it wasn't the most pleasant experiences at times. So thank you for being a great partner in it. And I know cost is going up, inflation's happened. And I think we are on a pretty good cycle. You know, every two years versus what some of our other programs in our city has been, sometimes every 20 years, you know, that type of thing, which is where we were making comments before. I don't understand or know enough about it and would like to have some type of small workshop or whatever with Jordan or someone to talk about the the looking forward versus looking past scenario and what that would mean overall. And so a little bit more dialogue on that versus just hearing about it and deciding to change one way or the other. But I'd like to have more of a dialogue at another time on that.
Jeremy, we can refer you. I think a good example would be Clackamas County. They've got a very structured process of how they establish the rates, review with all of their their franchisees and so on. That might be a good thing for Jordan to maybe learn from as far as how they regulate. And and I can choose what you like from that. That's just my suggestion. Andy, any ideas?
Yeah, there's kind of two models out there. There's one that Clackamas County uses. And I believe Gresham kind of uses the same model. And then the city of Portland has a different model. They use an economist who has his own kind of large Excel spreadsheet. But they're both good. I like both of them. And we can present both of them and you can take a look at it and see if you like it or not.
And I had one other comment because you guys come every about every two years. And you know what my comment's going to be because you brought it up in the past. Steve's shaking his head, is recycling styrofoam, which we used to do at one point in time. And I know that's, I just bring it up for, you know, because I had to. It was great to get rid of my styrofoam in a recyclable format. Wish it would come back, but obviously, this is the wrong, we're going in the wrong direction. So anyways, I know it costs a lot and I just bring it up just for reminiscing.
We've got a solution for you, Jeremy. Send it over to Mayor's house.
Yeah.
But make sure Councilor Exner pays for it.
Anyways, that was a great program back in the day when it lasted.
Steve or Andy, do you know when the franchise term is next up for renewal by chance?
It's an evergreen, so it's got a 10-year notice. So if you wanted to end it today, you'd have a 10-year notice. And then that that amortized the equipment. And the other thing is, we've got what, two new trucks in Sandy? Andy?
One in 2018 and one in 2019.
Yeah, and and those trucks are 300,000 a piece now?
320.
320.
I think when we started, they were about 170. But they're very clean emissions now.
Yeah, I was just curious if if it was up in the next couple of years, then a full, you know, franchise agreement, kind of big look on the process and the agreement itself might be something we could do with during the renewal process. But no, we're, we can, we can also go the route of amending at least that section on on the rate review.
Right, right.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate the update. And I believe you'll be coming in front of us again for something more formal. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, Jordan, what do you want to bring? I I wouldn't want to see this on a consent agenda. No way, Jose. I'd want to see this as a as a formal action item at one of your business meetings. And if you'd like, we could have a resolution prepared that could explain it so the council could have open deliberation on it. This is not a consent agenda item.
Yeah, that's right. It'd be a council resolution. And I think we're talking about July 20th. The council meeting on the 20th, is that right? All right. Well, thank you.
You bet, guys. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And so with that, I will adjourn our city council meeting for three to five minutes till 7:30 and then we will re-adjourn. Thank you. City council meeting to order. Please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic that stands under God.
Liberty and justice.
All right, well, welcome. I'll go ahead and start as usual with a review of our council meeting this evening. We'll start with calls for any changes to the agenda. We'll then go to the public comment portion of our meeting. That will be the opportunity for members of the public to call in or to slide on over from reviewing the meeting to being a panelist to provide public testimony. The only other item on the agenda that does have public testimony tonight is under ordinances 10.1, which is our land use conversation continued over from our last meeting. So if you do want to talk on that topic, that will be the moment to address that. Otherwise, all other items should be addressed in our public comment portion of our agenda. From there, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We'll then move to that ordinance on the land use. And then we'll go to resolutions for Vista Loop Tenai pedestrian project. And then under old business, we'll be discussing the child care incentive program and adding that to our tenant improvement program. We'll go to a report from our city manager and then to our committee and council reports. And we'll adjourn our meeting for this evening. And then, of course, we do have council and executive session that will be convening after we convene our our meeting this evening. With that, Jeff, will you call the roll?
Here. Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Hamblin.
Here.
Councilor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Pollian.
Here. Thank you, Jeff. With that, I will be asking if there's any changes to the agenda. All right, seeing that, we'll go to the public comment portion of the meeting. Please note, there is a separate opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed annexation code changes during our public hearing later in this agenda. And the council welcomes your comments on other topics. Please see the instructions below on the agenda. Those are if you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and then wait to be recognized. Once you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record and then you'll have three minutes. Jeff, do we have anybody raising their hand?
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a look and let's see. It looks like we do have a couple of hands. The first hand I see is Kathleen Walker. So Ms. Walker, you should be able to unmute yourself here in just a moment. And once we get that, you'll be able to speak for three minutes and please state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Hello.
Thank you. Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Bluff Road. I noticed that, first of all, I missed the earlier part of the agenda. Did you issue the money for the grant for the mural? part of the agenda. Did you issue the money for the grant for the mural?
We did. We provided direction to move forward with the grant.
My concern has to do with the, another appointment to the Arts Commission. And one of the concerns I have is just the, the large number of, of Arts Commissioners who, who don't live in Sandy and don't pay city taxes. I, I understand it might be hard to get people on those committees, but the scuttlebutt that I've heard is they're proposing to start charging a one or two or three percent arts fee for infrastructure developments that, that are done by the city or in the city. And I'm just kind of concerned that we've got, you know, only two, I, I know there's like seven or eight or nine commissioners. And now you only have two people on that commission that are city residents. And so there's not really an opportunity to, you know, have a, have a balance for those positions when they may be making decisions that affect city residents and especially those paying taxes. So I guess I would just, you know, I understand, you know, the person being proposed is, is a great person, I'm sure. But I am very concerned that we don't have, that we have, we have folks making decisions that are not residents and taxpaying citizens here in Sandy. I don't think that's fair to the residents. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Jeff?
We do have another hand up. This person has signed in under the name David. You should be able to unmute yourself now and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Sometimes it takes a moment. I think you're unmuted now. Yeah?
My name's David, 18390 Minick Avenue, Sandy, Oregon. I was actually calling concerned about the movies in the park for the summer. Us residents, we really need something to do with our kids. And with this COVID thing, it's really shut us down. And I would really like to, you know, find some way to adhere to the Clackamas County 25 rule person per event or find a way to get around it. But I mean, something I've got two kids myself and they're going stir crazy being locked up in the house with all their events, boardings. Everything's been canceled on them and there's nothing for them to do. I mean, so I mean, you know, movies in the park, I mean, the park's a rather large area, the screen's rather large. I mean, there's a way to separate us and, you know, you know, maybe get two sessions in or maybe start early and get two movies in. I mean, that area is fairly dark with all the, the trees covering it. So, you know, maybe we can get two movies in and do 50 people a night versus 25 people a night. But that, that mean, that's all I've really got. We just got to find something as a community to come together. You know, a lot of us were looking forward to the Fourth of July show and, you know, though we didn't have it, we still turned it into a World War III, you know, type situation. We celebrated our independence, no matter what the governor had to say about it. And so, you know, I think we still need as a community, we still need some kind of outlet for us to do and for us to take our kids to do and enjoy some kind of normalcy in, in our community.
Thank you, David.
That's all I've got.
And then, I don't, I don't know, did we catch your, your full name and your address, David?
I, I gave it. I can do it again, though.
No, we're good then. Sorry.
I'm just not sure we got your last name, David. I'm sorry. I might have missed it.
David Breams.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, David. And then I'll, I'll definitely address that in our counselor reports and stuff tonight and look for other counselors too as well. But I know Jordan will also be giving a city manager report, and I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions off of your, your public testimony this evening on that. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Jeff, sir, further public comment this evening?
I do not see any other raised hands, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And moving forward into the consent agenda, I will look for a motion or discussion. I do have a question, though, spuring off of Kathleen's public testimony. And that, that is, well, one is, is I've never, I guess first of all, sorry, I've never heard anything about this art tax fee thing. I've, I've never heard of that. So any scuttlebutt of that happening has not made it to the council level at all. So completely unaware of where that's being made up from. With that, though, my question is, is, is there, I guess Carl, you could help me with this, or maybe George or Jeff could. Or even Tyler as well, is what is it with our residents? Do we have, what is to break down with city of Sandy residents versus non-residents on the Arts Commission right now?
Right now, I think she, Kathleen Walker was pretty close. There's, I think there's only two, it may have been three of the seven that are inside the city limits. So, and then the one that we are looking at tonight to approve is outside the city limits as well. So I believe that'll make it something either five to two or four to three, I think, that certainly more outside the city. And I have to tell you, it was quite a while ago that we did have a three, a 1%, excuse me, commitment to all public buildings that were built of their construction price. I think, I believe that's what it was, would be assessed to art. So I know that the, the new buildings down in the industrial area, there was a 1% of that was given as to art. I believe they thought about it. If they didn't do it, they did some, I don't know if it was 1% for the police station. So I think there were some others as well put out there, but I think that's maybe where you're hearing that from, or maybe Kathleen is. And it, it has been rumbling through. It's gone through the, the Art Commission a couple of times, but it's never been put together as a a formal proposal by any means. I've, I've been counseling them that this is kind of a bad time to be increasing prices, just there's an awful lot of, of increased fines that are fear, fees, I mean, that make it pretty tough to make that fly very well. So, but I think that's.
Power to do that without us?
That was part of the council many years ago. I think that was actually back when.
State law, state law for the last 30 years have required public buildings to have like one or three percent of the overall build over a certain dollar amount. I'm sure David could maybe be aware of that, but that goes back about 30 years. When I was at Western Oregon, building, a new building down there, they required all new public facilities to have a certain percentage of art.
So I can, yeah, it's a, every, every building that's a state building has that requirement. And then it trickles down to local governments to the extent that there's state money being used. So it kind of depends upon the project. But that, a lot of local governments decided at, you know, some point along the way to also include that requirement for any local project. So it, it kind of depends upon the source of the money.
Okay, Councilor Lee, you have a hand up?
Yes, my concern with what Kathleen brought to us was that our other commissions and committees or whatever they may be, all have a requirement about so many seats being local. And I'm not sure why this commission is different.
I agree.
I agree too. That, that's what I was going to say is usually in the laws, the bylaws of that committee will allow for zero people on it or allow for one or two. You know, the library is a little different because it goes in the library district, which is outside of our city limits. But even when we did our economic development program, we had a requirement, we did change. The only thing I recall changing while I've been on council is the planning commission. We did just open that up to go out, you know, have an additional person outside the city limits if they had a business. Not a business, and I think we have one member represented on that. But I'd be curious to know from Jeff or Tyler what those bylaws, or I don't know if I call them not bylaws or whatever requirements are, because we would have laid that out, how many could be outside the city, if any at all.
When that ordinance was adopted, oh, sorry, Jordan, go ahead.
You, but you probably have more information than I do, but it actually, the residence requirement is for the Oregon Trail School District or the Library District. And it's in, it's in the ordinance, so it's actually in the, in the code.
It's in the code and, sorry, Jordan, go ahead.
Oh, I was, I don't know the history and why that was a decision. I assume it probably is, you know, has to do with the fact that you're looking for people that have expertise in art and background and are either they're an artist or, you know, somehow have connection to, you know, that, that area. And so probably considering to cast a wider net to capture that talent and provide input into, you know, art in Sandy.
So I was, I was just going to add that it appears to me that it, having looked at some of these records recently, I believe originally it was only city limits and then it was amended in late 2018, which I presume was because they were having trouble getting enough people. I don't know if that's true, and we could go back and look at the records. But it was amended, I believe, after it was originally passed in late 2018.
And in this particular case too, when we had a devaluation of art commission seat, only one individual was able to make it to the point where we could interview them and he was outside of the city limits. But I do think in at least the art commission's positions, there's, it's either, well, there's not a way to make half, but it's pretty more than some of the other committees.
So, so and, and I, and I talked, I was on the committee that interviewed Dan. And on that, it's Carl, remember, I, I talked about how much I enjoyed Dan, I liked Dan and and think that Dan will be, would be an outstanding committee member and bring a lot to that commission that's not currently there. That said, I, I would entertain a motion from someone on council to pull this out of the consent agenda and possibly forward it to a future meeting. And the reason for that, Carl, and I look at you because you're on the committee, is, is we had that other person that, that applied and wasn't able to make the interview. And I'm not quite sure if that other person was a resident of Sandy or not. But we've got, I mean, it is important. I mean, we got to have more constituents. We've got to have members of our, it should outweigh, right? It should be five to four in the way of residents and maybe two outside. It's so lopsided. It, quite frankly, it makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah, I understand what you're talking about in that as well. I just that I think that we still are within the code or the ordinance that follows with that. But I think when we tried and maybe Jeff, you can chime in here about, we tried very hard to get that other individual to come in and we delayed the meeting several times to make it sure we could get somebody. And they eventually just walked away from us. Jeff, is that how you, or Tyler, I'm not sure who it was.
It was Tyler who was making that effort and Tyler might know where that individual lives. I don't know. I think Tyler probably knows. I did want to state for the record that there are currently three members within city limits. It's not two, it's three.
So what's the count? Three to what?
It's currently three to three. If the council were to adopt the consent agenda as proposed, it would be three to four. If that makes sense? Yeah.
And four is a way of residence?
No, I'm, excuse me, it's currently, it would be three within city limits and four without if the council appointed the person on the agenda tonight.
I will add that the individual that did apply and was not able to be interviewed or never responded to my phone calls was a Sandy resident. The previous application process we went through only had one applicant who happened to be a Sandy resident. So ultimately, I think the larger issue is that we're not reaching, you know, Sandy community members in a meaningful way to get them involved. So, you know, I don't know where, what the, the conversation around that looks like. The other thing to keep in mind too is that there are three or three positions that are expiring at the end of this calendar year. So we could add, I'm sorry, what was that, Mayor?
Tyler, I think this is one of them, isn't it?
It is. So we could look at, you know, depending on how the council feels, appointing this individual still, getting through the rest of this calendar year with a full commission. And then, you know, in the coming months, look at revising the ordinance language to have more residency requirements, if that's something the council would like to do.
Yeah, of the three positions that are expiring at the end of this year, two of them, if you did appoint this individual on the agenda today, two of them would be out, out of town individuals and one would be in town.
And I have to say too, that we have really struggled to get up to the full compliance of this one. We've had six chairs filled for quite some time and then it was five and then now we had one individual, Ms. Bologna was put in there a couple, three months ago and she isn't inside the city person. But again, you're right, there is a relook at this particular seat in November, December, I guess it is. And we could easily push that out or work on the others as they need to be. But this one, I would love to see us get a full contingent in the seven seats.
I, I'm going to Councilor Smallwood and then Councilor Petzold.
Yeah, you know, if it's, yeah, sorry, if it's, if it's three people within the city limits and four outside the city limits, provided we appoint the individual this evening, I, me personally, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's close enough. They're still inside the school district. You know, they still obviously are doing their shopping and their business in Sandy. They have a vested interest in the community. I, I don't have a problem with that. I, if we were like, you know, one six or two five, yeah, I might feel slightly different. But I, I think we're, I think we're close enough that we can go ahead and move forward with this one.
Yeah, Councilor Petzold.
Yeah, if we're having a hard time filling all seven slots, that doesn't mean that we don't, can't change it, go to back down to five. You know, and, and we've done that in the past. I mean, our library board was a lot bigger. We sized that down a while back. One reason why it was so big was because we brought in Welch's Ullin area as well. But the point is, is we can pare it down to five. I mean, the difference between five and seven is whether or not you're going to have quorum at that, that piece of it. I think one of the things why I would always probably side on having the larger number of making sure that we had inside residents, outside residents, is that this is a special commission. It's an actual commission and not just a, an advisory board in such, is that correct, Jeff? Because the way we formed it, which is about two years ago, was more like a planning commission, an arts commission. And so in that, in that vein, I guess I would, I would side on having, making sure that the number of seats inside the city limits would be greater than those outside the city limits.
Thank you. Councilor Lee?
Yes, I could see appointing the person tonight that I think at the end of the year, when there are positions to be filled or readdressed, that then we get that balance for sure by the end of the year when we do the new appointments, that there should always be one more from the city than outside.
I feel it's all going in the same direction. A question for one of staff that can answer this is, Jeremy had mentioned that we've changed the advisory committees to, you know, the, at the amount of seats. But this is a commission. So does that make this more difficult to change the number of seats?
It would, it would take an ordinance. It would take a code change. So slightly more difficult, but not impossible.
Right, right. Okay.
It would just be a vote by city council, right? We could vote it relatively easy proposal by staff voted in. Yeah.
So to move us forward, what I would say, okay, go ahead, Councilor Smallwood.
Yeah, just, just real quick, just something to consider for the, for the group is, is having a larger number for a commission versus a smaller number for a, just an advisory board. I, I kind of like the idea of having a larger number for a commission because they're operating somewhat independently versus an advisory board that is just, you know, advising councils. So that's just, just something to think about in the future.
I, I would say though, having been on planning commission and then also watching this one by, I'm attending every meeting. The differences are that the planning commission is pretty much run by planning department. They do a lot of study and analysis, checked out the field and that sort of thing, but they really don't get involved in doing a lot of the actual events and occurrences. And the art commission, several of them are actually very involved. A great example is Becky Holly, who is, she's actually doing art projects herself, renovation, putting together this, this new mural. All that is, there seem to be an awful lot of work that they do. And having more numbers is always a better opportunity to get volunteers to help out than fewer numbers. So, but again, it's just a easy code. And I, I do like the idea of having more city residents than not, because it is, there is going to be some sort of fee or something like that attached to it. Jeff, do we have a, I don't know if the commission has an authority to make a fee. It has to be the council, right? I don't know that they would have that authority. They could propose it to us.
I believe, I believe that's correct, Councilor.
So we've always had that protection where the council would be able to be doing that.
So to move us ahead, considering that this. So to move us ahead, considering that this spot is only until January and we've all now kind of voiced our concerns of wanting to start leaning it more resident. And there's been some discussion about looking at the amount of seats. I would suggest to council that we move forward with the consent agenda as is for tonight and ask Counselor Exner to provide our council leadership as the liaison to the arts commission to work with staff and the commission to kind of resolve and look at some of these issues if that works for everybody. And if it does, I would look for a motion to adopt the consent agenda for tonight.
I will do that before you go to a motion. I will agree to make that happen as much as possible.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
There's been a motion from Counselor Pete Sold and a second from Counselor Lee to adopt the consent agenda. Please say aye or lift up your thumb for yes.
Aye.
The no ayes, motion carries.
I need to abstain since that was in our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to ordinances. Let me pull up my reading here. All right. So instructions here for our virtual public hearing, public testimony for this hearing will be called in called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I'm now opening this public public hearing for land use file number twenty dash zero one zero DCA at seven fifty nine and calling for any abstentions from the hearing body. Any conflicts of interest? All right, looking for the staff report.
All right, I'm going to share my screen and pull up a PowerPoint.
Before you jump into it, Emily, excuse me a minute, just I don't this is something that needs to be disclosed, but Jeremy and I had a rather long conversation with Emily and Kelly, there it is, about some of the workings of this particular presentation. So we have quite a bit of conversation about it.
And I think some of that will come up in this presentation as some of the changes addressed our concern.
Wonderful. I was going to ask about that. Thank you.
Wait a minute.
So as you know, we brought this, I guess it was last month already. And so what I'm going to present today is just just the changes from last time we brought it to you to this time. And if you recall, as Carl and Jeremy just pointed out, a lot of it was around the submittal requirements and the analysis requirements. So we tried to add a little bit more flexibility in. So looking at the changes since the June hearing, the first one is aside from that was just the the tree removal annexation waiting period. We moved it back to 10 years because that seemed to be the consensus after the last discussion in in June. And then in terms of kind of adding that flexibility in, so there are a few analyses that we were requesting that be submitted upfront. This was just to be a little bit more clear and transparent about what was required for annexation. So the transportation planning rule is an Oregon state requirement. It is it is required. We just added it into the code. And what we've done since the last hearing is add a little bit more flexibility to the language. So the the part there that's underlined and in italics is the new language. So we're we're kind of giving the a second option of explaining that a TPR analysis is not required. So you can either submit the TPR, you know, do and submit the TPR analysis or explain that it's not required. There's also some more language for flexibility regarding properties that would be exempt from having to do some of the additional annexation analysis surrounding demonstrating public services are provided and mitigated for. So we've added again in in the italics for property, so an annexation for which the city has executed an annexation agreement. And the agreement allows for A1 and A2 to be deferred until development is proposed. And then again, A1 and A2 are the requirements surrounding demonstrating that public services are available and that you can do mitigation for any impact to public services. Then we also added flexibility in the language surrounding seminal criteria related to adherence to city plans like the transportation system plan, the comprehensive plan, the parks, trails, master plan. So again, just kind of reiterating that the analysis could be deferred if the applicant enters into an annexation agreement. And then the last piece is regarding the FSH, so the flood and slope hazard analysis. So previously, the code had asked for approximate location of the FSH area. We had back in June changed it to surveyed location. This is because the FSH overlay is a zone change and so it would require the same process, essentially a type four review as annexation. So it would be simpler to just do the surveying upfront and then go through the, you know, the the whole process of going to planning commission and council at the same time. But we've added the approximate language back in so that the applicant could make a choice to either submit the approximate location or the surveyed location. And if they wanted to go with just doing the approximate location, they would have to come back in at a later time when they were presumably when they were going to develop. And then they would need to survey the FSH area at that time and go through the zone change at that time. So those are the main changes since your last discussion. And that's all I have in terms of the slideshow.
Yeah, I would just like to add that Jeremy, Carl and I met for about an hour, as Carl already mentioned, and we talked through these pretty extensively. We also had the city attorney's office, David Doofman and Chris Kreen look at the changes once one more time to make sure there's still adherence with state law and all the other checkboxes they do for legal side of things. So I think what we're bringing to you tonight is a much more comprehensive or flexible code, but still gets to the same result that we are looking to get to with the proposal from last month. Because there are additions, subtractions and changes to the code language, it will have to go for first reading again. So it's not the second reading that you're doing right now.
A question from Counselor Lee.
Yes, I just have a question. Could you define what kind of a circumstance would there be when the transportation plan rule is not required to be met? Are there some examples?
Sure, yeah, I could do that. So if the property was already within the urban growth boundary before we expanded it in 2017, then typically those properties do not have to go through the TPR findings. Whereas the properties that were added since 2017, all of those new properties that were brought into the urban growth boundary have to do TPR findings before they're annexed. So that's that's just one distinction there.
Any other questions from council for staff? Okay, I'm getting that. Oh, sorry, Counselor Pete Sol.
No, I don't. It's not a question. I just want to thank the time of Kelly and Emily that they spent going over this and thinking about the changes and our concerns that we had before. And they really like the changes and agree with the changes that were made. So as it gives the flexibility for those people annexing in, but yet still making that available to them to be able to do it at the time of development, if that's the case, or do it at the beginning. Either way, it gives it to them and having that recorded on there. So it's that agreement that they have to sign that protects the city as well. It also allows the the mom and pop person that wants to annex and, you know, and then let the developer handle all that. Gives them that flexibility and the protection of the city. So thank you. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and going over that and the additional changes. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Exner.
Yeah, ditto, I guess. I have to appreciate was the effort Emily and Kelly put into it. I feel really comfortable that unless our lawyer Doofman here tells me differently is I really feel like this is something that something like Bailey Meadows would never happen again. I I think that there is some real strength here and I really appreciate the fact that the small mom and pop kind of example would happen easily and they wouldn't have to go through a lot of the super detail that maybe a larger piece of property would probably have to go through. I do feel like this is a good change. I appreciate the strong effort that planning put together and helped us get to that point. So.
Well, and on behalf of, I don't know, I guess we'll speak for us that we're kind of on the other side of that boat. Just want to, I think it's part of what makes our council here in Sandy special, right? Is that we had a divisive vote in which then a couple of our counselors that were on the other side worked with staff to come to a more agreeable solution. And all of us wanted them to get there, right? So that we could all be as a team. So I just wanted to thank everybody for your openness and moving forward in that way. But of course, we still have a lot of dialogue we need to do on this tonight. We still need to hear from our public. So let's go ahead and do that and then we can have further discussion and stuff afterwards. And so let me find my place. So here we are for public testimony. I hear the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and the staff will make sure your evidence is proper properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now call on testimony in favor of the proposal. Please state your name and mailing address for the record and you'll be provided three minutes. This would be the moment to raise your hand. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, I'll just give it a just give it a minute here. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, I am now calling on testimony against the proposal. Reminder to state your name and mailing address for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, I am now calling for a neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for nor against the proposal. And remember, please state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, we have Kathleen Walker. You should be able to unmute yourself now and three minutes, please state your name and address.
Welcome, Ms. Walker.
Hi. Kathleen Walker, one, five, nine, two, zero, Southeast Bluff Road. I appreciate the effort to modify some of the language, including the change to 10 years that we had discussed before. And I I'm not sure if these are against the proposal or what. A lot of it is just kind of questions that are unclear. One concern is the allowance for properties that are surrounded by city and fall under the ORS two, 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 point, seven, five, zero. Do we still have the leverage to ensure that annexation of those properties will build the necessary infrastructure, including roads and parkland donation if appropriate? Another issue question I had was getting clarification for the development of annexation agreements. It it sounds like we're doing annexation, we're either going to require them to do this analysis stuff or they can do an annexation agreement. As we know, the devil's in the details with Bailey Meadows and the proposed annexation code language is there to ensure that developers demonstrate how and that they will take on the responsibility for constructing the necessary infrastructure and meet our TSP parks and trails, master plans, et cetera. There's mention of doing an annexation, the annexation agreement. How specific is that annexation agreement? Does both of those options have the same effect? The the more in-depth analysis and the annexation agreement? Does developing an annexation agreement get done without that analysis? So if we or they enter into the annexation agreement and then annex in and learn the requirements and costs of what that entails and they freak out, then what? Given the development of annexation agreements, do these agreements have the assurance that the requirements of everyone knowing the needed investments to to build the infrastructure and if necessary, donate land for a park to meet all of our plans, that all that will be required in the agreement and all that will happen? That's a little confusing, but that's what I apologize. Just the, you know, clarification between the analysis and the agreements, do they all get us to the same place? Does the annexation require any proposed zoning changes be made at the time of annexation? We need to make sure we do not get into a bait and switch where zoning changes are made after annexation is approved. I do also have a concern that the TPR is not required for the lands within the UGV originally. You're assuming that there are not any more Bailey Meadow issues out there on those properties and there may be. So please clarify the TS, the TSP and responsibility for paying for road infrastructure requirements versus TPR requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Jeff, is there any further public comment for neutral testimony?
Mayor, there are no more, no other hands are raised.
Thank you. And I'm now calling for staff recap and recommendation.
I think I'm going to mostly defer to David here. I think he'll be able to speak a little bit better about the ORS island annexation statute and then also about the annexation agreement and what's in those.
Sure. So the reference to the island annexation is basically recognizing the reality of of certain situations where you have a piece of property that is surrounded by the city. And normally, under state law, it's one of the instances under state law where the city can without the consent of the property owner, just go ahead and and annex that property in. And I think the reasons for that are, you know, fairly evident. Most likely in those situations, those types of properties are are receiving a lot of city services, but but not necessarily paying for them. They're pretty rare, but you do have, you know, a decent amount, a handful in Sandy. If and so what that really is getting to is when it's an involuntary annexation on behalf of the property owner. In that case, no, there wouldn't be a requirement for the property owner to meet the, what is it, A1 and two standards because they would need to have applied to do that. But that doesn't mean simply because a property is surrounded by the city that you might not get a property owner who's willing to come in. If that were the case and they decided to annex, then I believe A1 and A2, those criteria would be applicable because it wouldn't be a technically an island annexation under that statute. The issue with respect to the development agreement or the annexation agreement rather is that's meant to be just an option for the council and for the city. There's nothing that would ever require the city to to enter into one. So it's a a point of what I would say is pretty good leverage. It would obviously depend upon what the annexation agreement said and what the council at that point agreed to and what it was willing to allow or defer. But basically, the idea is that if the council wanted that opportunity or that allowance, it could it could say, well, instead of you meeting A1 and A2, we will allow you to defer that. But here are the terms under which that would happen. So, you know, I mean, there is truth to the idea that we don't know what that would say until you'd have it in front of you like any agreement, but the the council would be in complete control as to whether that agreement was ever signed and what it would say. Because if the the other option would be just to deny the the annexation request.
Yeah, I'll just add on the the difference between the TPR and the transportation system plan. The transportation system plan is a document that shows where the future traffic corridors, mainly collectors and arterials, bike lanes, pedestrian paths, and the such will all be placed. And then that helps create the methodology in the capital improvement list that you guys look at periodically. And then that therefore leads to projects that we assume and take on. The TPR is looking more at the transportation planning rule. The TPR is looking more at the transportation planning role, which is more around the intersections with the state highway system. So it's more looking at the ODOT requirements around those intersections. So they're kind of different. They're not wanting the same thing necessarily. And currently we only collect SDCs for the projects listed in the transportation systems plan. We don't collect fees on behalf of ODOT like some jurisdictions do. So ODOT has asked us a few times to start collecting SDCs that would then be used on ODOT projects. And some cities have done that and that would be the avenue to do it is through the TPR analysis. But right now we don't have anything like that and I don't think we're going to be proposing anything like that to the city council.
Okay, thank you. I am now looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, so my computer stalled. I'm guessing that Counselor Hamlin made the motion and I think I heard Counselor Pete's old voice make a second. All those in favor, say aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so then we are now to discussion. I guess I've closed the public hearing. Eight nineteen. All right, discussion.
Yeah, I'll go first. Like I said before, I appreciate Kelly and Emily's work on that with David and his team before. The concerns I had before have been figured out and in my mind fixed for what was my biggest concern. And I think I don't want to speak for Carl, but I think I heard him say that earlier too. So my recommendation would be thank Emily for all her hard work on that and Kelly as well. And would be to approve it.
Counselor Exner.
Real quick, I, I do also appreciate Emily and Kelly's work to get us on board and, and make those changes that really took me from being quite a bit against to highly in favor of. Again, I feel very confident that we would not get a Bailey Meadows walk around in us again. And I see this has got some flexibility with the small properties and the control over the larger properties. And I think that's really where we should be now, may find somebody who's really trickier than our lawyer is, but find a loophole, but for the moment I feel like it's pretty strong. So I would be very in favor of moving forward with it. I guess it's the first reading.
Okay, I'm looking for discussion or a motion for a first reading.
I make them, well, we need to.
Jeff, can you go ahead and do the first reading?
Sure. So this is ordinance 2020-13 and ordinance amending chapter 17.78 of the Sandy municipal code related to annexations.
And I'll move that we approve the first reading.
I have a motion from Counselor Exner and a second by Counselor Smallwood. Let's go ahead and all in favor say aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, we go ahead and provide us a second reading.
Yes, this is ordinance 2020-13 and ordinance amending chapter 17.78 of the Sandy municipal code related to annexations.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Counselor Hamlin. Counselor Schultz hasn't gotten a second yet this evening, so she gets this one. And all those in favor, say aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you and all council and staff. Really appreciate everybody's efforts on this one. Good job.
Yep, good job.
And moving forward to resolution 2020-16 Vista Loop 10 Lake Pedestrian Project. Looking for staff. Jordan?
So I'm Mike unmuted. This is Mike Walker, Public Works Director's item for our 10 Lake sidewalk project. And one of the many steps in a project like this involves these sort of things. So I'll let Mike do a brief overview of what this action is and what we need from the council tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Jordan. Much like any ODOT project, the local agency doesn't have a lot of say in the direction the project goes, but also has to do a lot of the dirty work maybe instead. But this really isn't dirty work. It's just that ODOT makes the local agency acquire the right of way. And so the amount of right of way has been identified. As I pointed out on the staff report, no real property will be acquired, nor will any improvements be affected by the easements required, all we're requiring, acquiring at this point or trying to attempting to acquire our temporary and permanent easements for access during the construction and permanent easements to make driveways match and to build, fill slopes to support the sidewalk or the retaining walls necessary to support the sidewalk. There's eight parcels involved and the size of the easements range between about 200 square feet to about 2,600 square feet. The easement areas are shown on the exhibits to the resolution. And like with any attempt to acquire property or property rights, you know, cities policies always been that eminent domain is the last resort and we fully expect the fair and reasonable compensation offered after the appraisal will result in a willing seller arrangement. Typically, you know, the only reason you have to go to condemnation sometimes, or at least to file for immediate possession is because you just never hear from the property owner. They just kind of, they's out of town or out of state. And so they just ignore it and just to keep things moving, sometimes you have to file for possession. And it's not really any, you know, reluctance on the part of the property owner to part with the, these property rights. It's just some people just ignore everything you send to them. So the staff recommendation is to approve resolution 2020-16.
Thanks, Mike. That doesn't look pleasant. I get a feedback, I guess. Looking at those maps and sorry, the city has to do, ODOT's work for them. But I don't hear any other comments, but I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
Mayor, looks like you're back now. There is a motion on the floor to approve.
I heard it, Ms. Vow. I'm, I'm in, all those in favor? Thumbs up? Opposed? Thumbs down?
Sorry, Stan, I thought you were just waiting for someone to talk.
No, I was, I was yelling at the kids to stop streaming and get off the internet. I was like, you guys, I'm in a city council meeting. All right, so moving forward, childcare grant program into the tenant improvement program.
Good evening, council. How's everybody doing?
Oh, sir, we're good. How are you? Hope you're well.
Pretty good, pretty good. So this is the proposed childcare incentive program that we brought in front of you on May 18th. After discussion at that meeting, we received a suggestion maybe to add the childcare business or to consider adding childcare businesses as an additional target industry for the tenant improvement program. So we looked into that and that turned out to be a fantastic suggestion. Hold on a second. I'm gonna start my video here. There we go. So we kind of ran with that and it turned out to be a pretty simple suggestion too. All funding streams are already in place. We still have plenty of funding available to cover this. With one exception, and that would be unless we receive multiple applications outside of the UR district. I think that's very unlikely. I've, I've got 25,000 in funding in that account for the tenant improvement program for businesses outside of the urban renewal district. That's the same 25,000 I started the biennial with, so we haven't had to spend any of that money yet. We could potentially do a couple of these projects if need be and still have some money in there. So I think we're good there. And this will also require very little work to set up. We could have this ready to go next week. The only difference in the program for childcare businesses to review again is that the grant will cover outdoor play area setup as required by the state, which would be fencing and, and/or play equipment instead of the commercial hoods and grease interceptors on the restaurant track of this grant program. That's pretty much the only difference. Also another reminder that while this program covers everything on the inside of the facility, that, that exterior child, the, the play areas is one of those things that we want to call out specifically so it could be covered. TI also covers ADA pathways on the exterior buildings as well for any business that qualifies for it, so. So that's pretty much it. Staff didn't really develop the marketing grant proposal all that much due to the kind of the mixed and tepid reaction we got from you guys. If this is something that you'd like us to look into more, just give us a little bit of instruction on that. We'd be happy to do so. And then finally, there is a, something at the end of this proposal that this is, which is the adding SandyNet fiber installation as a reimbursable expense. That's something I've kind of wanted to do for a while and I just, this, this just happened to provide the opportunity to do that. The basis for that is that high-speed internet is a utility like electrical or plumbing or any other utility. And I would argue essential in today's business world. So I mean, I think it's something we should consider. It would cost us very, very little. I think it's $350 install fee for a business if SandyNet has equipment at that building, which most of, they can reach most buildings now, I believe. So, you know, a 50% reimbursement would be 175 bucks, which we'd may make back after four or five months of service, depending on what level of service they got. And it will end up increases, increasing SandyNet's commercial take rate as well, which is always a good thing. So that's it. The, the questions before you tonight are, or the recommendations we'll make, I guess, is that we would ask that you approve the addition of childcare businesses in the tenant improvement program. That you approve the addition of SandyNet fiber installation as a reimbursable expense. And to provide additional direction to staff if you'd like us to look at the marketing grant proposal.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for coming back with this. You took a lot of our recommendations and put it into action. Quick question, the internet's for both, right? For, if you're a restaurant or a childcare. Right, so Counselor Pete's had a hand up? Yep.
Yeah, I think the SandyNet piece of it is a really great idea and I'm just sad I didn't think of it myself. But we did do the other program where, before, where we did a lot of the downtown, the business areas. So we've already hit a lot of those, but I do know out of all the installs, the commercial is probably the most expensive because of the hard cap. So this would definitely help out those businesses. And additionally, with childcare as well, I know there's a lot of other programs I've heard where you're able to kind of see your kids while you're at work or whatnot. You need that high-speed fiber internet to do that, but regardless of that, I think it's a great addition. I think it's great and I think Bethany should be the one that proposes the recommendation.
All right, Counselor Schultz, do you have something you'd like to say?
No, I'm excited about this. I'm glad we were able to kind of come together and figure out something that works for everybody and we can unanimously hopefully move forward on it. So if nobody else has anything, I would move that we go ahead and accept the recommendation from David.
I have a recommendation, I have a motion from Counselor Schultz and it's from Counselor Lee to move forward with the program.
Did I do it wrong, David?
No, you did it fine. I just was gonna, it's so tough to jump in sometimes. I just have one clarifying question. And so is, and this is maybe for David, this is urban renewal dollars ultimately, correct? That will be funding it?
Unless the business or unless the structure is outside of the urban renewal agency.
But this is not a decision for us to make. Is it?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, what, what you could have is ultimately the urban renewal board will have to weigh in on it at some point. It doesn't mean you can't, you know, make this, give this direction. And, and certainly it could be a city program that you end up having just basically being refunded by the urban renewal district. I mean, you could do it that way too, but if it's going to be urban renewal dollars, it seems to me that the straightforward way would be to have the urban renewal agency board.
Can we pull ourselves back together?
Well, Phil's still on.
Yeah, you could reconvene the urban renewal agency board and, and certainly, yeah, there's no, no reason why you couldn't do that.
Make a motion that we reconvene.
Hold on, we have a motion. I hear it and I'm probably going to go forward with it. You have your hand up?
Yeah, hold on. It's a great point that I don't think we've fully thought out. So I, two things that I would ask is on the, on the one request that David presented was around, well, I'm sorry, what was the, it was around like the media grant or whatever we would get. So we would just like, what's that?
Marketing piece of it.
The marketing, so we would just like a yea or nay on that just because there was a mix. And so staff would just like, yeah, research it more or no, let's leave it be for now. And then the second part is I think you'll also need a motion for council because the TI program also has money that's spent just from the general fund and has nothing to do with urban at all. So you're actually, I think, wanting to do a motion as council and then doing a separate motion as the urban renewal agency. Just want to add that complexity to it.
Yeah, me too.
So how's your feeling on the marketing piece? I, I'll just be blunt. I've, I've never been a huge fan of it, but I'm okay if people are.
I haven't, I have not been a big fan of that either. That was one of the, I just, yeah, I just not a big fan of that marketing piece.
All right, thumbs down for Exner and no one else seems to be jumping in. So with that, why don't we do a motion on this and then we'll pause and then see if maybe we can get Phil over for an urban renewal board, quick urban renewal board meeting.
Would you guys like me to text Chris and see if I can get her on the call too?
Yeah, absolutely. Why not?
She missed the earlier one. She might not be available, but see if she can get on.
Give it a shot.
All right, so we have, well, we have a motion and a second for, to adopt this for our council. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye or giving me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. I now, I also, hey JJ, I, I have a motion from Counselor Hamlin to convene our urban renewal board. I guess I probably do need to do that. Is there a, is there, okay, David's saying I do. Is there a second to Counselor Hamlin's motion?
I'll second.
All right, Counselor Smallwood seconded. All those in favor of convening our urban renewal board? Thumbs up? Aye. Opposed? All right, let's slide Mr. Snyder over if he can make it.
Okay, I'm working on that.
I hope he's still watching.
Oh, Phil, you mean?
Yes.
Cousin Phil.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Well, there's Chief.
He's sitting in the hot tub.
How'd you change? Thanks.
Yeah.
Up in the firehouse?
Nope.
Got enough time to just get home, I see.
Yep.
Good for you.
Chief, were you watching in on some of our conversation?
I was, yeah.
Okay, and so if there's discussion, great. If not, I will take a motion within our urban renewal board.
I make the motion that we approve the urban renewal side to the childcare grant program and tenant improvement aspects within the urban renewal district.
A second.
I have a motion. Go ahead. I have a question before we take a vote from Counselor Exner.
We, we did, we did eliminate the marketing portion, right?
Yes, we did. Correct. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Opposed? Thumbs down or nay? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Chief. I now call and close our urban renewal board meeting. And I'll reconvene our city council meeting.
Awesome.
Thank you, everybody. Now, we could never do that without a virtual Zoom meeting. I just wanted to make that point.
We're getting really good at this, aren't we?
Yeah, right.
Play more productive.
Yes, we are. Moving on, on our agenda, we are now to our city manager report. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. A few items tonight. Let's start with the coronavirus COVID-19 update. And what I wanted to brief you on tonight is our thinking right now on reopening our facilities. After a conversation today and a conversation last week with department heads. You know, it seems like a lot of the cities in Clarkamas County right now are tying the reopenings of both City Hall and other. City facilities to Phase Two with Clarkamas County, which of course is now the tri-county. You know, Multnomah, Washington, and Clarkamas are lumped together for future phases. Your guess is probably as good as mine in terms of when that might occur. According to the dashboards, I think we are, for the three-county area. For moving into Phase Two with the gating criteria, we're meeting everything except for a couple key measures. And that's just total cases are trending the wrong way. And then I think it's the contact tracing too. We're not achieving, I think. The majority of cases being successfully traced. So a couple of those. You know, today's numbers were a little bit better than the record numbers in terms of confirmed cases this last week. You know, we've talked about the fireworks and sort of the concern about the Fourth of July. And the actions there with, with the communication coming out of the state and the governor's office for really trying to encourage people to. You know, maintain the social distancing, wearing masks, and being safe over the holiday. And as we get into, you know, the summer activity season. And, you know, to address the public comment, which is a great point, is something that we've had, you know, a few discussions about. And I know other cities have looked at things like movies in the park and the, you know, again, the difficulty. Around those type of events is same thing with like the Fourth of July fireworks is, you know, the. The, the limit on mass gatherings and sort of the restrictions about how you can hold those events in certain venues. And, you know, it's pretty hard to argue that it's not in a venue. And you can successfully view a movie and have people spaced out six feet apart and all that. It really puts a, a limit on how many people can be there. But one idea that some cities have looked at is drive-in movies. We would need a big screen and some property to do that. But it's one thing that maybe we can kick around. It might be a little hard to pull off an amount of time, but it is an interesting idea to kind of bring that back. As a, you know, American pastime this summer. But, you know, we're, we're still looking forward to be on the reopen, like playgrounds and things like that. We still get calls about people using, you know, those type of facilities, and it's hard to police, obviously. But again, you know, those would be Phase Two activities that if, you know, we continue to stay safe and, you know, pull those numbers down. Hopefully, we can move into it still this summer. Any, any questions about that? I know we, in the past, I think it's been a month since we talked about pulling city council meetings and boards and commission meetings in person. My sense is that's an activity that's going to be really hard to do in this current phase. And also given now the requirement for. Wearing face coverings or masks when you're indoors and sitting, you know, closer than six feet to a fellow counselor. I think my, my recommendation and opinion would be to continue the Zoom, you know, the Zoom meetings platform, which I think are going pretty well for us. And, you know, the difficulty for us again was like the venue and trying to come up with a place that would be big enough. I think it would be pretty awkward for having a council meeting where we're masked up. So for, for the time being, we'll continue to schedule the Zoom meetings. But I'd say we continue to check in on where we're at, where the numbers are at, what phase we're in, and how you guys are feeling and what your level of comfort is in terms of coming back to in-person.
I saw Counselor Exner put a hand up.
Really disappointed about the fireworks stand. I'm not going to belabor it. It's done behind us and all that. But it did, it did seem likely, didn't give us a chance to look at the possibility of mitigating. And I'm thinking about music in the park and movies in the park and kind of stuff. And just as an example, our church is trying to stick with the 25, but they're putting them in different rooms. This is an example of mining park, you've got a parking area, you've got a stage area. You've got some other areas that maybe are isolated from each other. I'm just wondering if we could work out something where we could split people up into. Do some mitigation anyway to make some of this stuff happen. I really hear a lot of people saying, we've canceled everything. There's nothing left over that we have typically do, and it's, our community needs to do something. I mean, we've been talking about isolation and what people go through and experience. As seeing that nobody is able to talk to each other, get close. Some of the senior individuals are, I'm sure, going through some struggles. I'm going through some struggles with that. So is there a chance of doing some mitigation and do some of the, pull some of these off?
Under Phase One, it's obviously harder. I mean, we've done things like the, you know, drive-by birthday parades and things like that. I, I think the difficulty with the fireworks show is we were in sort of an impossible position to come up with a plan. Where we could police and main, you know, ensure that people weren't going to be able to follow the proper guidelines. Because of course, we were going to be over the 25-person capacity for, you know, the viewing area.
And so other communities, but, but other communities did figure that out, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'd like to add something to that as well. You know, I think, I, I would have liked to have seen us try and problem solve this situation also. Very disappointed in the, in the knee-jerk reaction. And it's probably been the number one thing I've heard from people in the last week in the community. I've gotten phone calls, text messages, emails regarding it. I would have liked to have seen us maybe close the school campus or work with the school district to do something like that. Allowed people to view it from wherever in town they could have viewed. I would like to see us be proactive and looking at ways to still follow the guidelines that we need to follow. But also provide some entertainment and activities for our community. You know, these are, these are big deals to, to people in this community. And I feel the same way about the movies in the park. I agree 100% with Carl. I would like to see us try and problem solve. And figure out a way to accomplish, even if it's, hey, we're going to have it in separate areas, maybe we're going to move it. Maybe we'll have this movie here or that movie there. I, I'd just like to see us work to some sort of conclusion.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I'll just say, I, I completely agree with that. I'm a little, I was a little upset that we took a vote. And it felt like that maybe staff didn't take that vote and then take it seriously and then run with it. To provide a bunch of different scenarios in which we could make this happen, a lot of which Counselor Smallwood suggested. I saw other communities be able to have their council and their staff come together to find ways to get around different issues. With that, and I think, you know, for example, we just had presented to us a drive-in movie. Well, I, I guess I don't understand why, when we voted on this a month ago, we weren't talking about drive-in fireworks. And those kinds of things. So, I mean, I wasn't planning on really kind of going there. But I do think it is a bit of a disservice to those counselors that voted for it, as well as those counselors that voted against it. Because on both sides, you take a certain amount of heat. And we're all, you know, we're all counselors and we show up to vote. And I think to a certain extent, we should demand that there's counsel, that there's staff action, you know, after our, after our counselor votes. And I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you don't have anything to say, Counselor Pete's all, that's fine. There's, there's a hand up earlier in the conversation.
Yeah, I just keep raising it. No, I agree. We need to be able to bring our community together outside as a group. I mean, I was out this weekend on the other side of the mountain and, I mean, COVID didn't exist over there, right? And the sheriff's going around, not, nope, you know, there wasn't anybody, you know. It's such a different world just on the other side of the mountain. But that being said, I mean, there was actually people doing drive-ins in their, at their own places. Anyways, we, I don't want to go there right now. I mean, we've had enough said about that. We do have to get going on it. But as, loop back around to what we haven't talked about, what your question was as well, was, you know, about having city council meetings. And that I'm a very social person. I think you all know that. I like to be face-to-face and having that time and. You know, chatting to the wee hours of the night afterwards as we're all there. I miss those times with all you guys and other people in the audience as well. But I do think that having this Zoom scenario here has brought other people out and communicated a lot more. It does make it a little bit easier for everyone to have the same amount of screen time and the same amount of face time and the same amount of visibility. As counselors and as other people as well. And so I would say my belief, and I have this same one for work, is until we're kind of all back into the same room. I think this is actually been working out pretty good, and I enjoy it for my work situation. At first, you kind of hate it, but then you kind of respect it and you get to know it. I mean, yeah, grief, John's been all over the world in the last hour and a half. I mean, he's been camping in a tent, a gorgeous lodge, too. Now he's on the Pacific somewhere, but.
On Top Gun, on set, and that is the truth.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it brings a little bit extra there. And I've actually enjoyed the last few months in our communication with all of you. And I think it's been, we're quicker at it. I think the, we just, the process goes a lot smoother too. And something we may have never said a year ago, you know, and also. But when we bring back only half a group or four people in a room and everyone else is on a Zoom. You don't get that connection and you always have some left out. And we don't want to have anybody left out in any conversation. Or that ability. So I think it keeps the playing field. The same for every counselor, staff members, the public, everybody. So I would recommend, even if we're going into other phases, that we look at continuing some of these same scenario. That's my view sense.
I agree with a lot of that. Counselor Lee?
Yes, I agree with what Jeremy has said. And the other piece I would suggest that makes this better is. When I attended council meetings before I was on the council, it's very difficult to hear if you're sitting in the audience when people are speaking. And with this, we're getting more people involved and you can hear and see people. This is by far better than what we were doing.
Yeah, I agree with all that. I think there's a lot of advantages to it. As I've watched different council, council setups meet virtually and where you've got some counselors in, at the rostrum in the meeting hall. And other counselors doing the Zoom format, it's just choppy. It, it doesn't work very well. And so I'm a strong proponent of us not meeting to get in the same room until, well, quite honestly, until we have the unanimous. Decision of our council that they would like to do that. So, okay.
Couple of other things. Jeff had sent around a boards and commission code of conduct. And I think he sent it last week, and this was something that came up. You know, it was a few months ago, actually, pre-coronavirus is the new timeline markers. But when the council was reviewing the, the council rules and as we started looking at the board and commission rosters and. You know, that work. So great to get your feedback and input on that. Take a look when you get a chance. Something that, you know, other cities have, you know, adopted and modeled successfully. And I think it'd be an improvement for, you know, our, our boards and commissions and, and, and sort of. You know, just bringing that level up in terms of how we engage and conduct our, ourselves in the city. Another update here, we have the website project. I think that you're aware that is part of our communications plan and council goals. It's been, it's been started now officially. We have the firm onboard helping us out. Key staff and several different departments are helping. And they're actually working on some initial design scenarios and mockups for the new homepage. So that would be exciting to kind of see some options and, and seeing a new page, webpage start to come together. Another reminder that it is, it is July already, and the council election is coming up in November. And, you know, there's several positions that, that will be, that'll be open. So I think it's August 17th is the paperwork file deadline. And we've posted the openings pretty much everywhere with Sandy, you know, post, and we put it in our newsletter. So we're trying to get that information out and share it throughout the community. And then on the wastewater project, just want to give a brief update on that. We met with several permitting agencies last week. By Zoom, of course. But the, the idea there was to give them an update on where we're at with looking at the alternatives. We had met with them about a year ago. And, and at that time, there, we were just starting that work and doing some of the primary engineering. And, and some of the work with the discharge. But now there's a couple sites that we're looking at as possible alternatives. We've made some, you know, progress on looking at wetland alternatives like Rossum Lake. And even looked at some power generation possibilities with the Bull Run watershed. So it was pretty positive, pretty well received, good input. Again, it's helpful for us as we kind of move forward with looking at a Sandy River discharge and how that might look. And it's also helpful just hearing, you know, what all these different agencies may have in mind when we get to that point of permitting. But on the, on the project, we are, you know, moving on a lot of different, you know, components of the project. We've poured in about $400,000 into our wastewater treatment plant over the last year, just in equipment and repairs. So there's a lot of work going on down there to try to get that plant working to its best capability, even before the major condition assessment items. The collection system work is, is being designed currently, and we will have an action for the council coming up. I believe as soon as next meeting on an alternative project delivery method, the CMGC. So although we haven't seen any construction quite yet, there, there's a flurry of activity behind the scenes. And come the fall, there will be activity, a lot of it underground, of course. But there'll be a lot of work in terms of needing to communicate to people because I think there's about 600 laterals. And, you know, of course, several miles of piping that will be improved. So a lot, you know, on the horizon in terms of the wastewater project. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on, on what's going on there. So. And that, I believe, is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. On to counselor and committee reports, Counselor Schultz.
I'm just kind of reiterating some of what I was saying earlier when Maggie and Kelly were doing their presentation. I attended a webinar put on by the Greater Portland Inc. One of their Road to Recovery series was on childcare. And it was interesting. It was very, very much fit in with what our presenters were saying and looking at the big picture of. Basically spending more on high-quality childcare when they're little and then seeing the exponential savings. When they grow up in terms of needing less, less social services, less law enforcement issues and that sort of thing. So just to keep that fresh in our minds as we are. We were facing a childcare crisis before COVID. And we're anticipating it's going to be, I don't, something much worse than a crisis after this. If childcare is not able to reopen, not able to reopen at full capacity, they were barely functioning at full capacity before. So it's only going to be more of a problem. So more of a good thing that we have it as a goal, I guess, and something to keep our minds on and keep being creative. I'm really proud of our childcare incentive grants, anything we can at a local level to sort of mitigate some of the. Issues that we're going to, that we see now and we're going to keep seeing as we proceed through the COVID situation. And then I just had a question. I don't know, Steph, do we have porta potties out yet? Or will we like at mining or at Bornstead?
No, not yet. Same issue with the guidance. I mean, you have to clean them twice a day. And given that we're, you know, not supposed to be allowing, you know, rentals for large gatherings and things like that, you know, no playgrounds, splash pads. And, you know, we're not, again, policing to make sure people aren't using picnic areas and gazebos and stuff like that. But, so we haven't, haven't put those down yet.
Okay, just hearing.
Questions?
Yeah, well, reports of people just sort of using the great outdoors if there is no bathroom available. So I don't know if we can figure something out because that's not a great situation either.
Is that the guidance?
I know.
Is that the guidance from the state that we can't do porta potties? Because I see him, when I went to Dueschut County, when I was in Lasco County, is that a Multnomah, Clackamas thing that we can't do porta potties? I mean, we're not having an event, but kids do need to go to the bathroom and our parks are open.
No, you can have them. You just have to clean them.
Well, that's good. I like to usually do that.
Smart. All right. Yeah. And then just playgrounds is the big question that I keep hearing around. I hear it's tied to phase two at this point, so hopefully that happens before. There's no longer fun to play at our playgrounds, but anyway, that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. On Counselor's question about the playground, Jordan, my understanding is that Canbee's playgrounds are open. It's, is, what is, is there a guidance on playgrounds? It's called, you know, I mean.
Yeah, my, my reading of the guidance is they're supposed to remain closed. So I don't know if some cities started opening. I wasn't able to talk to anyone from Canbee today in our meeting. They're actually without a city manager right now.
So. Play with it.
Maybe.
Just a joke, just a joke.
What's David's take on that? I mean, you're, you're the counsel for a lot of cities, though. What's your, what's your law firm's reading on that? Because I know we've been, I went to several parks that are wide open. So what's the deal?
Yeah, I think it comes down, I'm not positive on this, to be honest. I've got another, two of the people in my office are doing most of the combing through the COVID orders. I think it comes down to it being, if I heard correctly, more playground and playground equipment versus park and sort of, you know, you know, what's the word for it? Passive kind of space or, you know, that there's a basketball court or whatever. I think it has to do with the fact that it's, you know, often equipment that you got kids that are touching and, and don't think of any of that. So if I understood correctly from the last time I had this conversation with was weeks ago, to be honest, that during phase one, that playground equipment is considered to be off limits. So I think.
Not allowed until phase two and Canbee has one of the highest virus rates of any place in the state. So.
I don't know about Canbee. We don't, we don't work with them or represent them, but I don't know what their story is. But that's what I understood about playground equipment versus parks, which obviously can heal.
I would mention that Canbee had a senior home that got, got it as well. Those are rapidly contagious. I'm not quite sure what the mortality rate in Canbee is either. Okay, Counselor, I'm trying to remember how we go, Exner?
Yeah, it seems incongruous that we've got trails, like the Tickle Creek Trail that I know is really popular. And we just let it go. People are doing, they're walking, running, bicycling, whatever it is that they do on that. And we seem to be able to let that happen, but not the parks. I'm an advocate for people getting out there and I hear so many people that they're just frustrated. They want to get out. They're tired of the three months isolation and more and more, it's going to be difficult to keep people from doing that stuff. You see more of that happening all the time. Couple of things here, really want to, I hate to keep imploding Jeff's head, but I've really looking at that letter that he's been putting out. I'm really impressed, just really pleased about the issues that he's taking on and the information that's being put out there for the Sandy letter. Great job. I really kind of hit Jordan here a while back about the progress on our INI, the stuff in the streets for the fixes that everybody is hoping, wanting to get done so that we don't get the overflow in the sewer system. That could be put into the letter, too, I think, because it seems like that's one of the things that the watershed councils that I interact with all the time are looking at again and again, what's the status of that? And I keep telling them, we're, we're working on it. I'm going to get that done soon. But quite honestly, it's getting a little hard to keep saying we're going to get on it soon. But if, I appreciate the update today and that might be a really good subject for this newsletter that Jeff is putting out. Good job, by the way. Things I hoping that would happen. I was looking at the staff reports. I see an awful lot of them haven't been done since April. Always interested in what's going on in the city, just not seeing people paying attention. If we're not going to do them, let's throw them out, junk them and we'll find another way to get informed. But some of those staff reports really a long ways behind. I think April of the library one was, you know, one that was relatively close. But I feel like we need to be able to step it up a little bit there.
I love them. I read them every time.
And I haven't been able to read any new things for quite a while, so.
So just a, just a question maybe for Jordan with staff. Because I know we do something similar for our board at the college. We just do a quarterly update. So sometimes put together a monthly update gets down into the weeds. So I don't know if folks are having a hard time coming up with content on a monthly basis. But I know we were for a while, so we're down to quarterly at the college and it works out fairly well.
But rather than making people feel guilty or me have, me or somebody else on council saying, where is your reports? And we could try something easier to do, but again, if it's supposed to be monthly and April is the last time we've done it, it seemed like they're behind the schedule there.
Well, there's, you know, our, our goal is to have them by the second meeting of the month for council. So there is a lot from June. The July ones just haven't been added yet. And there's a few that are behind and a lot of that, you know, is, is on us, you know, to keep those updated. Some of it is, some departments have a communications, you know, or at least have staff that are more able to produce, you know, more regular reports or the required to do reports anyways. But yeah, for some of those other departments, we do need to pick them up. But I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a guilty party for the city manager's report, but you guys get one weekly, so. But yeah, I could, I could definitely throw in a few more in there when I have time, so.
I'm a little concerned. We talked about the Art Commission, recruitment of getting people into the commission, the need to maybe shrink down our committees to five instead of seven to make sure we can keep the seats filled. We've got a few city council seats that are going to be open this fall. And I'm hoping that we'll get people who want to be committed to staying in those seats, doing as much commitment and getting that selected. I remember a time when we really had to pull people together to make city council seats, planning commissions, these work. And it's not very good if you've got somebody who's really just doesn't want to be there and it ends up being poorly done. And I think maybe we want to do a little bit, a better job about getting the word out. Certainly of the 11,000 people that are here in the city, we've got enough folks to fill these positions. Just seems like we need to get the word out better. Maybe there's something we have a discussion about, maybe doing some better job of getting that in front of folks. But it just seems like we have so, so much going on and it's controversial and expensive and needing good minds on it. It just seems like we need to put that to a little better. Getting some of the folks and sometimes media getting the old systems of putting it in newspaper is not the right, not the best, not the most productive. So I'm, I certainly be willing to brainstorm with some folks and figure out a better way to get that notice out and make sure that there's some good quality candidates coming up. So. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Counselor. Counselor Lee?
Yes, I would agree with the comments on the newsletter. It's really great. And I could see that being a format for when we have to raise the garbage fees to explain recycling situation and how that forced us into doing that. We had a little bit of bad news on the resilience committee that the first funder that was going to fund the six cities to do their plans had some issues with the virus, et cetera, and didn't go forward. But they have another group now that they're working with that we hope to hear something by the end of July to still keep moving forward on that. With the facilities plan that the cities put together and the greenhouse gas study that the county did, we now have a lot of good material to finish up our internal piece so that in a few months, we can move on to the broader community piece if that gets funded. Another thing I was noticing, Congress is working on their infrastructure bill and that's passed the House now. And one of the things in there would be really great for us. Senator from California made an amendment that the WIFIA funding should go over a 35 to 50 year term instead of 30. So that would really help us a lot on our wastewater project if they go ahead and pass that. The other thing is that the transit committee did meet and one of the things we talked about, given the cost of the electric buses and our particular geographic situation where they might not run as feasibly as some of the others, that we would start looking at hybrid buses. And Andy, I'm sure will tell us more about that in the future, but we are looking at that. See if we can do something that's a little greener, but still productive routes. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Where am I going next? Counselor Hamlin, thank you.
I'll make it easy. Nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor. But you're making it harder because I got to remember Counselor Smallwood. Yes.
There, I'll help you out, right? Really, the only thing that, that I've got to add that either other counselors haven't already addressed or I addressed earlier tonight is Don Robertson is the new president for the Parks, Parks Board. So I look for good things from him and hopefully a good direction. Excited to see him want to take, take that role on. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Counselor Piesel?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So I had brought up the question with Kelly and, and he forwarded over to, I forget his name, the city, come to me, about the storage of dirt right behind the animal veterinarian clinic there that it surprised us back in 2016 when it popped up and we're like, what's going on? Well, they got a permit. Well, okay, there's permit. Well, we didn't know about it as council. We got a lot of questions from the community, what's going on and why does big, ugly pile of dirt run along our highway? And then, so then I noticed it was coming up again and more and more of this dirt piling up and adding more. And, and that was why I brought this question up in speaking with Kelly. And, and so he, I guess that's under Mike's department there and, and they had gotten a permit. And so I got an email and yeah, they got in a permit, but you know, we can look at changing some of those code requirements for that. Because they, it was Thomas, I'm sorry, Thomas. But, you know, they can allow to get a permit to go store dirt. But the poor people that have the, if you look on street view on the road right behind their facility, look at it. Bring it up and look at it. They had a beautiful view out there and it's not their property. I get that. But now it's just a big, ginormous mound of dirt that is there in that commercial area. It's not industrial, it's not that. And so I don't know, I think it would be nice to have the city have some kind of parameters or guide rails on some of that. You know, there's also stockpiling of dirt for when you do projects and you have permitting for doing that, thing like that. And that's, you know, acceptable use, I think, like that, not just to store it for an infinite amount of time and be part of that and zoned in a commercial zoning. Anyways, that's something that caught my eye. I don't know if it's caught anybody else's eye as they've driven by and, or have gotten questions from other people. But go on Google Earth map, I mean, and bring up street view and look at behind the building there and what it was and drive by and look at it now. Not a pleasant change. Not what they were anticipating when they built that building, I'm sure. On another note, there's a lot of grants coming out and I, on Oback, and I think I mentioned to you guys as well, that there would be coming out a lot of grants. As everyone went online, Zoom meetings and meetings like this for broadband all over the nation as people are trying to figure that out. So there's a few different grant programs that are out there. I know Sandy Net is applying for one of, one of those and hopefully that would be, get that, but there are several others that are coming up there. And there's also a bill that was just passed in the legislation, the Oregon Lifeline Program Bill as well to help out some of the low income families and that type of thing. Some of the funding was only available on hard lines, but as you know, hard lines have gone away. You know, Carl has one, but for the most, the rest of us, we don't. But it's all on cellular and we were one of, only a couple of states in the nation that didn't have that, that fee on cell phones to help support some of those other programs for extending out broadband and, and helping that out statewide. There is also a hundred billion dollar infrastructure grant. Now, actually, I think the number kind of bounces back and forth. It's one trillion dollars. Sometimes they hear it. And that Jan was talking about, the transportation. Not only does it have a component for broadband out in the rural areas where a lot of our res, not our residents, but people that call Sandy home live that can't get internet at all, it could be used for. But it also will help out with, if you read it, and I sent it to Stan and Jordan as well. And you just do a word find on it because the thing's huge for sewer treatment implants. And then it's a transportation. So we also have our 362nd Bell Street. Some of these things that we've already started getting our plans, you know, the shovel ready projects, you know, the 362nd Bell Street, I mean, we put several years of planning into that. Not to call it shovel ready, maybe closed, hopefully, we're hoping. But, you know, be able to have that plan on that shelf and you pull it out and you apply for this grant. There are so many of these grants trying to get back. They did pass the House. The other one, as Jan was saying, talking about with the sewer treatment plant aspect of it. And I'll go as far as to say, Stan, there's also for the bypass. So, you know, there's another one. But kind of want the sewer treatment plant, you know, kind of.
The resiliency pass.
Yeah. So, yeah, not the bypass, the, the other way. Anyway. So just to be prepared and having, you know, that realizing what we've done the last couple of years, whether we were forced to do it or whatever, you know, the timing of everything with these coming out is really, we could take advantage of that. We need to try. You can't, you can't get it if you don't try. And I think we have those plans done and they just need to be tweaked a little bit to be able to apply for those. And so I'm excited about all three of those that I mentioned. Four, if you want to throw in the bypass, the resiliency pass or whatever. But we need to be applying for it and those timelines are fast and they have to turn around fast. The one that, for the broadband, the earlier one, all funds have to be expended by December 31st. And so these, what we're seeing, because they want to infuse it into the economy. So we're lucky we have that already working out and we can apply for that. Anything to help knock down the 70, 80 million dollars for that sewer treatment plant.
You know, Counselor Pete told it, to your point earlier on, Zoom meetings and staff. And the best part about them is why don't we reach out to Senator Berkeley and Wyden's district directors and, and Congressman Blumenhauer's and let's try to maybe just get a Zoom staff, you know, type meeting with us where we can talk about these grants and the legislation going through and how to properly apply for these things and the timelines and what kind of support and letters they can get us. This might get us a long ways than that, so.
Yeah, I agree. It's those letters that will help. Also, and Counselor Lee, you may know this. I know it passed the House. I don't know if it's passed the Senate and where it sits there. So, you know, any encouragement there to get that passed would help benefit us.
Yeah, it hasn't passed the Senate and there's some rumblings that Senate leadership may not be doing anything with it fairly quickly.
But in the meantime, we can dust our stuff off and fine tune it and get it ready, right? So because there will be things that are coming out, we know that. And more for, not just in the next month or two, more coming out in the next probably year. So the last thing I had was the signs are up. We've known about it for a little bit. Only because we get emails, probably no one else gets emails on from county and weird things like that because they add city counselors to it. But the Northwest Natural Gas Line, it's coming through town, as we heard about last year. And they ripped up the roads through Kelso and Boring and, you know, it created quite a hassle. And so wondering from staff, you know, maybe Mike or Jordan or someone, you know, what, what is it going to look like coming through town on the dates? Because they're saying, you know, and we know it doesn't happen overnight. It takes a while to go. And, you know, are they, I believe, coming right down, right down through the center of our town, Highway 26?
And then. Did you see the dates on that?
Yeah, it goes to like October. And, and I saw that and I know that, but our residents don't necessarily know that. All I know that because as an elected official for so many years, I got on all these different lists that randomly I get email that say some of those things. And then we have that happening. And then I know that, I think there's wanting to be a Northwest Natural, I don't want to call it a pump station, but a regeneration hut. I mean, whatever it is, a pressurization thing right behind Schuler Building, I think. So anyway, it would be nice to kind of get counsel briefed on that. I know it's not anything that we get to kind of pick and choose, and it's something that, you know, our residents obviously need. But it's, it's kind of like the sewer and water deal. But it'd be nice to be able to answer questions for our residents when asked more, especially when it gets, when it gets going and it's coming right down the middle of our commercial area in the middle of summer during our busy time. You know, it's, it's going to be creating a little bit of concern and it's going to be loud and it's going to be at night. So anyways, just that's kind of all I had.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, wait, that's me. I'm up, I'm up next. I, I will just start with a quick question I had for you, Counselor Lee, on the WIFIA loan. One of the things that were talked about was having a baby WIFIA within our small communities. Have you in your reading seen anything on what they're debating with WIFIA, talking about having a category for smaller communities?
No, there was nothing in the bill about that, but I don't know if that's something they could even just do by rule.
Right, okay. It might be something I'll bring up then with Dan from Senator Berkeley's office and when I talk to him. Thank you for that. One thing I wanted to talk to council on is part of on that topic is Mayor Axelrod from West Lynn has been barely active and trying to get support for the I-205 widening and expansion. We've approved having our logo and name on letters in the past. Where we've put our name is on letters on a state level to get state funding. What they're trying to do now is work closely with Congressman DeFazio's office to get it included in the bill. Other communities are, are saying yes, they're willing to put their name on it. I told Mayor Axelrod that I would bring it to council and get your guys' thoughts on whether or not this was something that you wanted to continue to support. Looking for thumbs up and down or comments. Okay.
Yeah, and when we go to get it expanded from there to Sandy or that around town, I love his logo on ours too.
Yeah, that's a thought. Perfect. Okay. And then a reminder that we have our virtual council listening session tomorrow on Race, which I'm looking forward to and should be a very good meeting and conversation. As most of you know, Jordan and I were able to have a conversation with leaders of the standup movement, which is the local kind of movement going on here, Sandy, and had an outstanding conversation. These are all very positive leaders in our, to me, quite frankly, leaders in our community that just want to see Sandy, you know, continue to improve in, in the ways that we operate and do things. Our conversation was not negative in any way. It was more of a recognition that a lot's going on in our country and a lot of us are kind of walking around with fresh eyes on, on a subject. And it's important to have dialogue and conversations in communities. It's just Sandy where I think it's more important to have those conversations in communities like Sandy where we're not necessarily as diverse as some other communities, but we're growing quickly and we're becoming more diverse. And so there is a little bit of work on the front end, I think, that we need to do as a community and stuff to get better prepared, just be better, better selves, more wonderful. So I'm looking, looking forward to tomorrow. Yeah, counselor.
What's kind of the format? Is it basically we're going to sit there and listen and they're going to put stuff towards us or we're going to interact or?
Little bit of both, little bit of both. You know, I really, I want it to be more conversational. What we've done is we've invited the, kind of the leaders of the organizers to join us as panelists for the, with council for the conversation. We will have public testimonies or public comment periods in which will be similar to council meetings where we'll toggle folks back and forth. And I'm sure there will be opportunities as different topics are infused into the conversation for us to address and kind of talk about it back and forth. And then Chief Ernie Roberts is also going to be a panelist with us to help kind of address any questions that might arise from police practices and stuff that happened here in Sandy.
This is a listening session. No decisions made or do you think we're going to have some?
No, I don't see any decisions. I think what's important is, is this kind of how I started the meeting a week ago or maybe a week and a half ago is, is it's important for us to be informed. Quite frankly, is that, you know, I think gender wise, we have a very diverse council. But, you know, quite honestly, is we do have ways to go and diversity on our council and within our community. And so I think probably a key factor for a lot of this for us will be for us to maybe go into it with open ears and minds and learn about experiences that we might not otherwise be aware of or know about.
We've been very lucky that we have such a great police force that we have a good relationship and trust with. They passed six bills in the state legislature about policing. And I'm sure Ernie can talk with us at some point about those a little more.
Yeah, and I'm sure those will be topics that could come up tomorrow night. And yeah, very proud of our police. You know, it's, it's interesting and they'll speak for themselves. But, you know, you're not hearing the abolish the police and that, you know, we have a really bad police department. It's more of a conversation that surrounds best practices in the field and, and how the best practices in community policing, looking, looking ahead and everything else. So that'll be tomorrow at 6 o'clock and the links are, you know, on our meeting site on our page. It's also talked about in the Sandy Source Newsletter. I've shared some information on it on social media. So hopefully we can get the word, keep the word out and have some involvement tomorrow. And with that, there's also going to be a Sandy Backs the Blue Rally. This coming Saturday from 6 to 8, that will have some of our officers there as well, just like their involvement with the standup movement rallies. Where a bunch of members of our community have decided to have a rally in support of our local police, which I think all of us agree is more than deserved with our local police department. And we're grateful that our neighbors are looking to show them that support for the standup. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Exer.
I, I have a lot of people asking me, how in the world could we keep the city business down to either no meetings, no virtual meetings, only virtual meetings? And we're allowing protests, meetings that are about the Black Lives Matter, obviously well above the 25 limits. And how do we reconcile that? And then if we're doing something with the police and I'm all for it, I'd be standing right there with them this weekend if at all possible. But how do we reconcile that? Where we have a people meeting and I'm assuming that they have got permits and all that kind of stuff. And then we also have, we can't even have a celebration of the mural.
I don't believe they do have permits. I don't, they do not have permits. So, so I'll take you through, I'll, I'll take you through how I reconcile it. Everything, what we're doing, what we're doing as a city is virtual. And so we're continuing our practices of everything that we host and sponsor as a city within the laws and guidelines and stuff that is handed down for us. Now, just like in other neighboring communities, there are members of their, of communities, both inside and outside of our community that decide to have mass gathering protests that they thrust upon us as a community. And they do that for a variety of reasons. I'm not coming down on it, encouraging it or coming down on it. They thrust it upon us. And when those are thrust upon us, you have to react as a city. And so we have, we have police, the different things in which we try to react and maintain and keep those in the best way that we possibly can. But one's a constitutionally protected right. I mean, you have the right to free speech, to free protest, to gather. And quite frankly, me coming out and supporting these folks to be able to mass gather and all that, I support them for all the same reasons. I want to have a fireworks display. It's freedom, it's liberty, it's the Constitution, it's the Bill of Rights. And that's what I lean on. You know, that's, that's how I think through these issues.
I want to go on record, I support the ideas and ideals. I've friends with several of the leaders in that group there. Just, it just seems like it's hard to reconcile 100 people meeting and then having not been able to do that for a fireworks stand, which I think.
Well, and I'll tell you, I think, I think both spread COVID. I think both spread COVID. Right? I think, yeah, if you go to a mass gathering, whether, no matter what your ideology is or what side of any kind of political party, if you're at a mass gathering, you're spreading COVID. That's, that's, that's my opinion anyways. All right, so that's Back to Blue. The standup movement, I believe they have another rally that is coming up. I'm not sure on the details of that. I'm sure we may learn some more of that tomorrow in our conversation with them. To your point, the next topic I want to talk about was COVID and local businesses. Counselor, like you, it really, really bothers me that I've got to look these business owners in the eye and see them struggling and see them worried and see what's happening to our community, what potentially could happen to our community. I was part of a mayor's and chairs meeting where Chair Bernard kind of said, you know, and I agree with him. Reading the tea leaves, it looks like the governor is starting to talk a lot more about pulling us back in the other direction. And I, 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 I will look, you know, when it came to the fireworks and all that, you know, we, we have a lot of work left to do as a council, and I want to just keep focused on the issues that pertain to Sandy directly and directly impact us and to keep us as united as possible. But the fact is, is that this does have a major impact on Sandy. And our business owners are really struggling and we do have people struggling out there. And we have people that are very worried about COVID as well and the spread of COVID and the ramifications of that. But we are going to have to, I think, we're going to have to bite off some of these conversations as council. They're not easy, but it's why we ran to be in these positions and to have opinions of these. And it's a moment of leadership. And as a council, whether we decide to march in lockstep with the governor or if we decide to come up with some Sandy solutions, I think that will need to be up for this council as a collective body to debate and have conversation and, and figure out what we want to do on that. But I don't see the issue going away. And I think all of us need to be ready to engage in those conversations in a very open minded and respectful manner, knowing that all of us are in this for all of the right reasons and really care about our community. And, and I think we just need to be prepared for that because I don't see it going away.
One thing, one thing to add to that is you're spot on. But please also remember that there's a number of people in the state that have yet to receive an unemployment benefit. You know, and then that has not been rectified and does not look to be rectified in the near future. So I, I couldn't imagine what those people are going through.
Right, 100%. It were, oh, could, can't even imagine. On business, Dutch Brothers Open, on more positive note, I would, I grabbed some swag, but there wasn't a lot. But I did grab some swag for some different counselors. If I, if we were all together, I'd be handing it out. But it was a great opening. If, my, my girls are excited about it as they have birthday cake flavored smoothies. So I don't know if y'all know that or not, but it literally tastes like cream cheese frosting coming in a milkshake. It's too sweet, but you know, girls like it. And I'll just end my report today with, I got a message from Chief Snyder who's still as an attendee saying that we could possibly even use the fire station radio signal for, for a drive in or something, a drive in movie signal in the park. I know we have a bunch of properties that we'd like to see eventually be commercially developed that are quite open and in the city, in the middle of our town. We'll have to find some good entries and exits and ways to make that work. But I think that's what council's talking about. Let's get creative. Let's figure out ways in this environment to bring our community together in a way that all of our counselors can agree on and appreciate. So that's where I would like us to be, is finding ways to be in unity in which we can push community events as much as we can. With that, that is my report. I'm going to adjourn this meeting, but counselors, please stick around for executive session afterwards.